Well, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, April 9th, 2020, and the first ever meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission to be held by telecom Brown. The format for the meeting has been necessitated by the current coronavirus pandemic and the need for us to temporarily suspend congregating, as we usually do every second and fourth Thursday of the month. It's important, however, that the work of the Planning Commission continue as best it can within the strictures of our new reality and the requirements of the Open Meeting Act, as it has been interpreted, to meet the challenges of this situation. In keeping with those parameters, we're embarking on a new adventure, teleconferencing. Thank you in advance for your participation and your patience. This change in format will require we do a few things differently as we go forward. Here are a few things you should know. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting will stop and it will reconvene once the audio connection is restored. If for any reason communications cannot be restored within 30 minutes, those items which have not been heard will be continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on April 23rd, 2020, 1:30 PM, which will also be conducted by teleconference. If an individual participant is disconnected from the teleconference, please try to call in again before calling staff at (297) 2289. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Staff will present each item to be heard, summarizing the application and identifying any points remaining to be resolved. Anyone who wishes to speak about an agenda item or to speak under citizens to be heard, if you've previously notified staff by phone or mail, I'll call on you to speak at the appropriate time. If not, I'll also call for public comment on each agenda item. Anyone who calls in after their item has been heard will be allowed to speak under citizens to be heard. When called upon to speak, participants should state their name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to the commission. Because of the extraordinary circumstances and the challenges of this format, we'll hold time limits on speakers' comments. As participants call in, staff will mute the participants' phones. Please keep your phone on mute until you're recognized to speak. That applies to all participants except the commission members who are allowed and the staff who are allowed to ask questions or comment at any time during the meeting. Please remember that only one person can be heard at a time. If more than one person speaks, neither one can be heard. Anyone who speaks, including commission members, please identify yourself when you begin to speak. There'll be a roll call every 30 minutes. All votes will be by roll call. So let's come to order. First order of business for the day is approval of the minutes of the March 12th, 2020 meeting.
This is Commissioner Coffee. I move approval of a receipt of the March 12th meetings of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission.
Privet, second.
Okay, first and second. Mr. Claire?
Yes.
Mr. Claire?
Yes.
Commissioner Coffee?
Yes.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Yes.
Commissioner Pennington?
Yes.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Yes, Hinkle, but aye for me too.
Thank you.
If you're not going to let me play, I'm going to go home.
So the next item on the agenda is the continuance request. Mr. Butler, will you read those for us?
Yes, we have nine uncontested requests. Items 46, 47, 48, and 49 have been deferred to April 23rd. A request to be deferred to April 23rd. Items 50 and 51, request for deferral to May 14th. Items 52, 53, and 54 have been withdrawn. And we also have some new requests. Would you like me to review to read those now?
Let's just do that, yes.
Okay. We have three new requests. The first is for item 10, defer to May 28th. Item 24, defer to April 23rd. And item 45, defer to May 14th.
Do I have a motion on the continuance requests?
This is Commissioner Claire. I did not catch the last one. Item number cut out.
Item, yeah, sure. Item 45, PUD 1760, defer to May 14th.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hinkle, I'll move approval of the continuances as read.
Commissioner Coffee, I second that.
Okay, Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. We have one item that we need to pull off consent. It's item number 18. We will vote on that separately. Mr. Butler, will you read those to us, please?
Yes. The first item is final plat of Redstone Ranch, Phase 7, located north of West Britton Road and west of North Mustang Road. Item 2, final plat of Meadow Lake Industrial Park, Section 1, located north of 119th Street and west of South Meridian Avenue. Item 3, final plat of Faith Works Development, that's located north of Southeast 15th Street and west of South High Avenue. Item 4, final plat of Robertson's Landing, Phase 2, located west of North County Line Road and south of Northwest 122nd Street. Item 5, final plat of Canyons, Phase 1, located east of South Sarah Road and north of Southwest 59th Street. Item 6, final plat of Lawson Place, located south of West Hefner Road and west of North Council Road. Item 7, final plat of Deer Creek Village 8, located north of Northwest 150th Street and west of North MacArthur Boulevard. Item 8, final plat of Colonnade Business Park, located north of 192nd Street and east of North Portland Avenue. Item 9, final plat, a replat of Lot 14, Block 13 of Wheeler District, Phase 1, located south of Southwest 15th Street and west of Southwestern Avenue. Item 10 has been continued. Item 11, application by Jeremy Hooks to rezone 11328 East Wilshire Boulevard, and that's located in 157. Item 12, application to rezone 2701 Southwest 149th Street from AA to single-family two-acre. Item 13, application to rezone 1012 North Meridian Avenue from O2 to R2. Item 14, application to close a drainage easement located at the southwest corner of Northwest 150th Street and Gambles Trail. Item 15, application to close the 20-foot east-west alley in Block 26 of South Oklahoma Edition, located between Southwest 6th Street and Southwest 7th Street and between South Hudson and South Walker. Item 16, application to close 20-foot east-west alley in Block 15 of South Oklahoma Edition, located between Southwest 3rd Street and Southwest 4th Street and between South Hudson and South Walker Avenue. Item 17 is an application to close a portion of the east-west platted utility easement located at 2805 Lysander Place. Item 18 has been called out for separate vote. Item 19, consideration of a resolution changing the name of American Indian Boulevard, extending from south of I-40 to the Burlington North Railroad tracks to First Americans Boulevard. And finally, 20 in the consent docket is a resolution adopting preserve OKC, the citywide historic preservation plan, as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. And just to brief explanation there, this item is one the commission is familiar with as we've had some study sessions on it and some presentations. If you have questions, our Historic Preservation Officer, Katie Frittl, is available on the line to take questions.
Is there any discussion or anybody who wishes to be heard on any of those items today?
Remember to hit star six if you want to unmute yourself.
If not, I'll take a motion.
Privet, motion to approve, consent docket is read.
Coffee, I second the motion.
Motion to second. Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye. Item number 18 was called out because there's no other need for discussion on that topic. But if there is anyone who wishes to be heard on that matter, unmute yourself by pressing star six. If not, I'll take a motion.
Privet, motion to approve item 18 on the consent docket.
Pennington, second.
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
There's no other need for discussion on that.
Okay, Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye. Item is supposed to be a separate vote? Will you read those?
Excuse me, but I'm, uh, Commissioner Pennington, you still sound pretty muffled. Is there a way to increase the volume there? I don't, everybody else is coming in clear for me.
I can't hear you either, Commissioner Powers.
Okay, try again.
There we go.
Oh, lots better.
Okay.
Yeah, that works a lot better. Okay, this is Jeff Butler again. Item 21 is a preliminary plat of Chapel Creek Park, and that's located at east of North County Line Road and north of West Hefner Road. And what we'll do to expedite, I guess, or make this meeting more efficient since it's online or telemeeting, we'll go ahead and have staff do a brief introduction of each item. And for the preliminary plats and plats, Jared Martin will go ahead and do that, and for the other items, that will be JJ. So Jared, if you want to go ahead and briefly introduce this.
Okay. The zoning for this proposed subdivision is PUD 1737, which was approved in 2019. The commission also recently approved an amendment to the comprehensive plan for this area, removing the employment reserve layer and designating the area urban low intensity. The plat proposes 138 dwellings with duplex and triplex development on 11.51 acres. Staff finds the preliminary plat consistent with the PUD and recommends approval subject to six technical evaluations. The applicant agrees with all of the TEs. The engineer and applicant's representative is Dean Kalida, and he is on the line to answer any questions if need be.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of the applicants?
This is Commissioner Cravens. Since it's in my ward, I'll take the lead on this. I've reviewed it and staff has indicated this preliminary plat conforms with the subdivision regulations. It also conforms with the underlying zoning. I don't have any objections or concerns. If there's no further discussion on the item, I'll make a motion. I'll reserve a moment to see if that's the case.
Let me ask if there's anybody who wishes to be heard on this item before we take a motion. If not, let's go ahead.
This is Commissioner Cravens. I will make a motion to approve C 7149, which is item 21 on today's agenda.
Claire, second.
Vote, Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Okay, item 22 is a final plat of Abbott Lake Edition, Section 1, and that's located west of South Air Depot Boulevard and north of Southeast 89th Street, and Jared will give us a brief summary.
Hey, guys, did we get ASO back? Sorry.
You guys hear me?
There you are.
Yes, were you called on to vote on the last item?
I thought I was, and I thought I voted. I voted.
Okay, all right.
If there's any question.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sorry, Jeff.
No problem. Yeah, Jared, you want to give us a brief introduction?
Yeah, sure. This is a final plat is for 63, single-family residential lots, three common areas on 26.86 acres for a gross residential density of 2.31 dwelling units per acre. The preliminary plat for Abbott Lake Edition was approved on November 14th of 2019. Staff has recommended approval subject to four technical evaluations. The applicant agrees to the TE and will be installing an emergency access drive that satisfies fire department's requirements as requested in TE 3. No variance is required for TE 3. Chris Anderson at SMC is the engineer and should be on the line to answer questions if needed.
Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions on this item?
Mine, we're only just to find out about the TEs, and they've been accepted, so I'm good.
Let me ask then, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Privet, I will make a motion to approve C 7148, item number 22 on today's agenda.
Coffee, second.
Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Yep, Jeff Butler. Item 23, application to rezone 15602 to MacArthur Boulevard from PUD 1651 to R1, single-family, and JJ will give us a brief summary.
Yes, this is an application to rezone 37.8 acres of an existing residential PUD to standard conventional single-family residential of substance located in urban low-intensity land-use typology. No issues with the application and recommend approval.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicants? If not, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item today?
Well, there's a protest on it.
Is there?
This is Commissioner Cravens. There were two protest letters submitted in our packet. Neither of those protests outlined a reason for their protest, just that they were in protest. If either of those people are present on today's call, I'd certainly like to hear from them. If not, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve the item as written.
Is there a Lisa Keith or a Billy Crouch present on the call today? I don't hear from anyone. I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Cravens. If there is no further discussion on the item, I will make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on PC 10650, which is item number 23 on today's agenda.
Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item number 24 has been continued.
Item 25, SPUD 1209, is an application to rezone 1123 North May Avenue from O2 to SPUD 1209, and JJ will give us a summary.
This is a longstanding retail strip along North May Avenue that happens to have been zoned office all these years. This application seeks to bring it into compliance for retail and sanction the retail uses that are there. It also basically just recognizes the existing development as it stands and allow the retail use. We didn't have any, we do, let's see, TEs, we didn't have any technical evaluations and recommended approval of the application.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff or our applicants?
Commissioner Highsmith here. If there's no, if there are no comments, I'm always prepared to make a motion on this since it's in my ward.
Let me ask if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item today? I don't have anyone signed up to speak, so I'll take a motion.
Well, I will make a motion to recommend approval of, pardon me, of SPUD 1209 to City Council.
Privet, second.
Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Pinkel?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Privet?
Aye.
Item 26 is an application, it's SPUD 1189, it's an application to rezone 3334 and 3336 North Lindsey Avenue from R1 to SPUD 1189. JJ will give us a summary.
This is an application to rezone a site that is zoned office but has been used historically for a, an event center. The applicant came in to zone an off-site parking lot across the street, additional parking. It was discovered that the event center was not properly zoned. So what this application does is bring the event center into zoning compliance and provide for an overflow off-site parking lot across Lindsey Avenue. There is one TE that requests sidewalks along Hill and Lindsey Street, and the applicant agrees to that TE.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff or our applicants? If not, I'll ask, is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Pennington. I move approval of item 26.
Coffee, second.
You want to make that subject to the TEs?
Yes, subject to the technical evaluation.
Yes, second.
Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Okay, item 28, application by, application to rezone 3827 Southwest 29th Street from R1 to SPUD 1205.
I'm sorry, did we skip item number 27?
No, I apologize. Item 27, application to rezone 8815 Northwestern Avenue from SPUD 692 to SPUD 1204.
This, JJ, this is an application to add agricultural processing to an existing retail, commercial, and auto sales use. The SPUD mirrors all the regulations and uses of the existing SPUD but for that one addition. There's one TE to limit access to one drive on Western. The applicant agrees with that technical evaluation.
Commissioners, this is in my ward, and I have been in conversation with the applicant. There's a little bit of an odd thing about this because the property owner operates a internet car sales business from an office on this property. The rest of the office is dedicated to these other uses, which I have no problem with at all. But I am concerned, was concerned, continue to be concerned about the idea of there being zoning in place that would permit this site to become what we think of as a traditional car lot. As you know, we tend to cluster those. This is not an appropriate location for that kind of clustering. And so we've gone back and forth with the applicant to discuss how we can limit the language to make sure that the business that he operates, which as I say is an internet sales business, can continue to operate. He's got to have the zoning that reflects that in order, the car sales, in order to get his state licensing. They have to have that zoning in place. So I get that, but I want to be very, very sure that the language of the PUD is clear that, that the automotive dealerships and malls is limited to internet sales only. Auto sales, autos will not be displayed for sale on the property. No more than 15 autos may be stored at one time, and they will be stored in the far west end of the property in the area that's depicted and designated on the site plan. The applicant has indicated, and she's been conversing then back and forth with the property owner, they are okay with those designations, that lines up with what they want to do to the property. It's not as bulletproof as I would like it to be, but I think it's enough to keep this from becoming like the first of many. As you may know, Britain, the old town of Britain is improving, and there are some exciting things going on up there. I'm hoping that'll trickle down Western. I don't want to see this particular piece of property become, you know, a drag on that. In addition, we're going to eliminate, again by agreement with the applicant and the property owner, we're going to eliminate fast food and the laundry. So with those changes, which as I said have been agreed, I would, I'm okay with this application. I think this will be a fine use of this property. So I'll ask if there's anybody else present who wishes to be heard, or if anybody else has any questions or comments they want to make.
Commissioner Powers, this is, Commissioner Cravens, since this is your ward and you are not able to make a motion, I want to confirm that I understood your changes. From the youth units presented on the application, you're going to, you, the applicant and you have discussed writing 8300.35 and 8300.48.
Yes.
In addition, it appears 8300.18, limited as you described, has been memorialized in the application, so there would be no change except what's presented on our application. Is that correct?
I, that, I don't know whether that change has actually been, you know, memorialized I, that, I don't know whether that change has actually been, you know, memorialized yet. It's, the language that shows in the staff report is essentially what we have agreed to. I've refined it just a little bit, even just this morning, but it's essentially what it says there. So no, no real change. It's just really a question of emphasis. I want to be very sure. Not worried about these applicants and property owners. What I'm worried about is the people who want to come and make a car lot next door, or the people who want to turn this into a car lot, you know, five or 10 years from now.
Understood. I think just for clarity and teleconference, the application we're presented with, for which I'm prepared to make a motion if there is no discussion, stipulates that no more than 15 autos onsite for sale at any time. Internet sales only is what's permitted. Autos shall not be displayed for sale on the property. And autos for sale will be located at the far west end of the property in the area depicted on the site.
And, you know, the, the one tiny little piece of that that I would change, it says, as it reflects in the staff report, that this is an internet sales only. Autos will not be displayed for sale on the property. So then referring to the autos that are there as autos for sale, I think, is a little bit ambiguous and creates some doubt. So I would simply remove that language, the for sale, and say that no more than 15 autos will be onsite at any time, stored onsite at any time, and that those autos that are stored will be on the far west end of the property in, in the area depicted in site plan. And leave out that double reference to autos for sale, because I think after saying that they won't be displayed for sale, it just invites confusion.
Right. So simply we would delete that line, autos will not be displayed for sale.
No, no, we're leaving that in. That's, that's the whole point.
Well, I agree, but you're describing what's written in my report. So I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, that we all collectively understand what you're exactly trying to accomplish.
So if you, if, in the first line, it says no more than 15 autos onsite, I would just leave it at that. No more than 15 autos onsite at any time, and leave off the words for sale. The second part, internet sales only, autos will not be displayed for sale on the property, that will be left just like it is. The third line, it will say autos will be, autos will be stored at the far west end of the property in the area depicted on the site plan.
Okay. I will await for any further discussion from other commissioners or people listening on the call before I make a motion.
Is there any other discussion? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard?
If not, anything done. This is Commissioner Cravens. I will make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SPOUD 1204, which is item number 27 on today's agenda, striking the youth units 8300.35 and 8300.48 from the application, and amending the language presented for 8300.18 to strike from the first line, no more than 15 autos onsite. The words for sale shall be struck at any time. It will read clearly, no more than 15 autos onsite at any time.
Commissioner Privet, second.
Is that in, including the TEs, subject to the TEs?
Yeah.
Or what?
My motion is-
Okay.
Um, Mr. Clair?
Aye.
Mr. Coffey?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens? And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Okay, item 28 is SPOUD 1205. It's an application to rezone 3827 Southwest 29th Street from R1 to SPOUD 1205.
This is JJ. This is a small, application for a small construction company office and warehouse building to keep equipment indoors. The, there's one, two technical evaluations, and the applicant agrees to both of them.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant or of the staff?
Any comments?
This is Commissioner Coffey. I've had a couple of discussions with the applicant, although communications was somewhat difficult. I wanted some assurance from the applicant of his intended use for this, but it does appear that it truly is a small construction operation. There were several cars parked in and around this area. I wanted to make sure it was not something along the lines of automotive repair. It appears that it is not. So I don't really have a problem with the application. So pending further discussion, I will make an approval recommendation.
Let me ask, is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion for approval to City Council, SPOUD 1205.
Subject to technical evaluations?
Subject to the two technical evaluations.
Hinkle, second.
Mr. Clair?
Aye.
Mr. Coffey?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Okay, item 28 is an application to rezone 14600 North, North Council Road from AA to PUD 1755.
Hey, this is a application for a 37-acre PUD that includes two tracts. Tract one would be single-family, and tract two would be multifamily, limited to 20 units an acre. Staff recommends approval, subject to three technical evaluations, and the applicant agrees to all three of those TE.
Commissioner Cravens?
Uh, yes ma'am, this is Commissioner Cravens. I spoke with the applicant, Representative Kendall Dillon, about this application. When it was first presented to me, I expressed concern about the traffic and logistics at this location, because Council Road does not provide a full interchange onto the turnpike. And in addition, Memorial Road, for those who are not familiar, is a one-way road between, up to Council, west of Council to County Line. It is a two-way road that is only accessible via the south side of the turnpike. So it's a logistical challenge. My understanding from the staff report is that oddly enough, there are no concerns with traffic here. I am concerned about the traffic here, for the record. Okay, we, they reduced the dwelling units per acre from 34 to 20, which further appeased my concern. I also visited with them briefly, and this is a bit of a change from the positions that I've taken in the past, to address their architectural regulations. The facade regulations here provide for 60% brick, veneer, rock, or stone, and then no more than 40% EPIS. I have been thinking about this for some time, and have grown more increasingly convinced with homework, that while EPIS is a provided building material in the code, it presents safety challenges and a lack of sort of caveat and poor information for buyers, since it is becoming increasingly a material that is exempted from insurance policies. They have agreed, so in other words, damage to that portion of someone's property is not coverable by a lot of insurance policies. That concerns me. They've agreed to spike EPIS from the facade regulations. So with those two changes, I am agreeable to, the balance of the application as presented. I intend to make a motion to approve it, but I will await comments from other commissioners or from members of the public who are on today's call.
Commissioner Cravens, let me be sure I understand. It is the specific material of EPIS. So the 60/40 split on the, on the architectural materials equation is okay with you. You just don't want EPIS to be part of that equation. Is that right?
This is Commissioner Cravens, and that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who has any questions or comments?
Uh, this is Commissioner High-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I would love to have a longer conversation at some point about EPIS as a material. Perhaps Commissioner Cravens and I could have that first, and then, you know, present to the commission our, our thoughts. But I'm not going to burden today with that, but I, I think, I think it's well worth discussing. This happens to come up quite a bit, it seems, and I think we should talk through it and figure it out. Anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to add.
I agree with that assessment. Is there anyone else present who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Uh, this is Commissioner Cravens. Hearing no further discussion, I will make a recommendation to approve PUD 1755 to City Council, which is item number 29 on today's agenda, subject to the changes that I outlined, and the technical evaluation.
Clair, second.
Second.
Councilman Clair?
Aye.
Councilman Coffey?
Aye.
Councilman Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Highsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item 30 is PUD 1754, an application to rezone 11545 Southwest 44th Street, PUD 1754.
Okay. So this is a 33-acre parcel that's part of a larger residential development. Uh, the application is in the urban low-density Yuluta. We recommend approval of two technical evaluations. One would be to increase the lot size on the west to 7,500 square feet, and two would be to provide a connection, a stub to the west. I believe the applicant agrees to two, but they certainly do not agree with increasing the lot size on the west.
We lost you there for a moment.
Uh-oh.
There you go. So-
Yeah, there we go.
So they, they are in agreement with one of the TEs, but not the other, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding, is they, they agree to the stub to the west, but they do not agree to increasing the lot size to the west, which is supported by the, the comp plan.
Mr. Dillon, are you with us?
This is David Box. I'm, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Mr. Dillon is also on the line, as well as my client, Mr. Anthony Mirzai. So as JJ pointed out, we do agree with TE2. We don't agree to TE1. I had the opportunity to, to visit with most of you, most of you via some sort of video function, so that you could see the site. The reason we don't agree with the TE number one is I frankly think that the TE1 and TE2 are in conflict. And the reason I say that is, if you look at what TE2 is suggesting by connecting to the west, in my mind, that's anticipating that the, the current development pattern, what's over there to the west, which is five-acre tracts, some of which are vacant, some of which are abandoned, it's, it's the belief of staff that that's going to redevelop at some point. Otherwise, they wouldn't want us to connect. If it's going to redevelop, because there is sewer and water, it will redevelop in a manner that is consistent with smaller single-family lot development. So as such, I don't think that there is a need for the larger lots. There'd be a need for the larger lot if it wasn't going to redevelop. But if it wasn't going to redevelop, of course, then we wouldn't need the stub. So to me, the two of those TEs are in conflict. But we do agree to connect, because we have reasonable belief that it's going to redevelop at some point to something similar to what we are seeking.
Well, without going into all of that, I would ask, Mr. Chambliss, is it, is it your assessment that the property to the, is, is the basis of the TE that the lots existing to the west are these large, I think they're actually like five-acre lots, that sort of thing? Is that why you're asking for this increase in lot size here?
Yes. It comes from the comp plan to address compatibility with existing development. We, I think we agree clearly that the, the stub to the west is probably more important, but we don't know when or if the property will ever-
Yeah.
Well, of course, yeah, nobody, nobody's got a crystal ball. But it, it does seem pretty obvious that the property to the west is, I mean, to refer to it as developed now is probably being generous. And so what's likely to happen to it in the future, I'm guessing, will be something smaller than five-acre lots. Commissioners, does anybody else have any comments or questions about this item? Is there anybody else present who wishes to be heard?
This is Commissioner Cravens. I would just sort of make the point that if you look at this area on a map, I think with the forthcoming, well, it's now open, the turnpike loop, the southwest turnpike loop, and you can see the developments that are going on around it, which are much more high-density in nature. I'm, I'm not so sure that I, I see the, the need to limit the lot size here. I'm not totally sure about the two TEs. I can't decide whether I think they are really in conflict. I'm glad the stub will be in place, because I think the, the land around there will continue to develop in this manner. But I don't, I'm not particularly bad about the size. That's my two cents on it.
So I, I'm fumbling with my papers here. Do I recall that there is sewer and water to this site?
Yes, ma'am.
So that alone makes it pretty unlikely that, you know, five-acre lot development is going to continue to be the standard in this area. And, does anybody else have anything they want to chip in? If not, I'll take a motion.
Commissioner Coffey?
Mary? Hello?
This is Commissioner Coffey. I make a motion that we approve just PUD 1754, eliminating TE number one, but leaving in TE number two.
Commissioner Privet, second.
Commissioner Clair?
Aye.
Mr. Coffey?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chair, Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item 31 is a preliminary plat of Montage being a part, well, skip that part. That's located north of Southwest 44th Street and west of North Mustang Road. The item number is C 7140, and there's a- The item number is C seventy-one forty, and there's a variance to section five-point-three-point-one, point D, point five of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, this is Jared. So I'm going to do a real quick summary and try and adjust a little bit based on the PUD that was just approved or recommended for approval. This plat is in, is the companion item for the previous PUD. Staff has recommended approval subject to the approval of the PUD and the six technical evaluations in the staff report. The applicant agrees to TE's one, four, five, and six. And then based on the approval of the PUD, they've agreed to provide that stub to the west. So TE three, I believe they're agreeing to that TE as well, and they don't need a variance to that requirement because they are going to stub. The final TE that is in there is TE two, again, discussing the seventy-five hundred square foot requirement. This... There is a portion of the plat at the northern... The northwestern portion of the plat is zone R one. The requirement in R one is to provide those seventy-five hundred square foot lots. Again, that depends on how you classify the developments of the west. So I can let the applicant speak a little bit to that, but I believe they agree to all the rest of the TE's.
Yeah, so this is David Box again. Jared's correct. So we... The plat itself, because of our recognition of the development to the north being a more stable five-acre tract development that is not likely to turn over, like the one to the west, already provided for larger lots in the northern part of the preliminary plat. And so what we are agreeing to is TE's one, four, five, and six. We do then not agree to TE three because of what was just approved in the PUD, so I think that can be deleted. And then I do believe we need a TE... Well, Kendall or Jared, do we need the TE on number two because of the north? I understand we're providing the stub to the west, but it's my understanding we still need the TE as it relates to the north.
For the interconnection between the four sections, is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, I think we need the TE... Oh, excuse me, I think we need a variance as it relates to the north because we're not stubbing to the north. We just don't need it to the west.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay. So then that is, we agree to TE's one, four, five, and six. We would ask to delete TE three consistent with the vote that just happened on the PUD, and we need a variance on TE two as it relates to the stub to the north.
Do you have anybody who has any questions or concerns about any of this? If not, do I have anybody who wants to be heard on this item?
This is Commissioner Cravens. David Box, you are in... You want the variance because you don't want the stub to the north, but you're willing to connect to the west. Why aren't you willing to stub something to the north?
Yeah, so if you look at the development to the north, that is a very stable development. It is not a development that is likely to ever turn over, or at least in the foreseeable future. The reason we provide the stub to the west is it is fairly certain that that is going to redevelop, and when it redevelops, it will be redeveloped, single-family. That stub to the north, if you look at the map, it is just unlikely because of the nature of the homes and the development that exists there, that it's going to turn over. And so it is inconceivable that there'd ever be a need to stub because we don't think that development's going away.
And this is Jared also. I thought, if I might add, the subdivision to the north has private streets that are already in existence. They didn't really provide a way to connect, and then those streets are also substandard, so if we were to try to connect to them, we might be causing a lot of different problems.
Okay, that was my question. This is Commissioner Cravens again. So those streets are private to the north?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that eliminates my concern then on the TE, so I'm fine with that.
So the first motion I need is on the variance.
This is Commissioner Coffee. I move for a variance on item two as it relates to the stub to the north in sections five-point-three-point-one, D five. I'm not sure I stated that properly. Commissioner Powers, could you restate that maybe for me?
I'll be glad to do that, although I think you did just fine. The motion is to approve a variance, an item number thirty-one, C seventy-one forty, a variance to section five-point-three-point-one, point D, point five of the subdivision regulation as it relates to the stubbing to the north.
Okay, so move.
This is Commissioner Cravens, second.
Commissioner Claire.
Aye.
Mr. Privet.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith.
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington.
Aye.
Mr. Cravens.
Aye.
Chairman Powers.
Aye. Who seconded that motion?
Commissioner Cravens, I seconded the motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I don't believe Mary got a vote in.
Aye.
Okay, now I'll take a motion on the item.
On the item C seven-one-four-oh, I make the motion to approve the item, subject to the technical evaluations one, four, five, and six, and eliminating item...
Three.
Three.
Item three.
Three. Privet, second.
Commissioner Claire.
Aye.
Mr. Coffee.
Aye.
Mr. Privet.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith.
Aye.
Mr. Pennington.
Aye.
Mr. Cravens.
Aye.
Chairman Powers.
Aye.
Item thirty-two, C seventy-one forty-six, is an associated item. It's the final plat of Montage, located north of Southwest Forty-Fourth Street and west of North Mustang Road.
Okay. This is Jared again. This is a final plat for a portion of the preliminary plat that was just discussed, and includes a hundred and nine single-family residential lots and one common area on twenty-one-point-six-five acres, yielding a gross residential density of five-point-oh-three dwelling units per acre. The staff recommendation is to approve the application subject to the approval of the PUD, which we've already gone through, and the approval of the preliminary plat, which we've already gone through, and three technical evaluations. The applicant agrees to the TE's as I understand it, and no variance is needed to TE two if they provide the emergency access. The engineers craft and toll, and David Box is representing the applicant. Both parties are on the line to answer any questions that you might have.
David Box.
Commissioner Box.
Yeah, we agreed to... Yeah, we agreed to all the TE's on TE two. It will be the emergency access, right, as Mr. Martin pointed out.
Do you have any questions of our applicants? Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Just Commissioner Coffee, I move approval.
Subject to the TE.
Substantial evaluations.
Yes, subject to technical evaluations.
Claire, second.
Commissioner Claire.
Aye.
Mr. Coffee.
Aye.
Mr. Privet.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith.
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington.
Aye.
Mr. Cravens.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Item thirty-three is SPUD eleven-seventy, an application to rezone two-oh-one Northeast Fourteenth Street from R one to SPUD eleven-seventy.
This is an application to allow a multifamily structure to be constructed at Fourteenth and Walnut that would somewhat mirror the development that's south across the street. This will be limited to eight units. Staff recommends approval of three TE's. The applicant agrees.
Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions on this item?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Claire's. So we have eight units. So we have eight units. Are we four below, four on top? Is that the configuration? It's a two-story structure?
It's my understanding, four up, four down. And there may be protesters on the line present.
I was just about to ask, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? I don't have anyone on my record here that I show as being signed up to speak.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Husro Iqbal, and my address is eight-oh-one Northwest Hundred-and-eighty-eighth Street, and I'm the one who has the application for SPUD one-one-seven-zero. I just wanted to indicate that I have had two meetings with the neighbors, and I have addressed some of the concerns they had from the previous master design statement we submitted to the planning commission for a staff report, and we have made concessions after listening to the neighbors on the number of units, on the actual height of the building, and most of the things which they were concerned about, also referring to the parking. So it started as a fourteen-minute development, which was trying to reflect what's across the street, but now we have brought it down to eight, maximum number, like an eightplex, and nothing more than that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Let me ask once more, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Hi, this is Commissioner Claire. I have one more question for the applicant, Mr. Iqbal. How many parking spaces are you providing?
Sir, I am requesting one parking space per dwelling, and that is my request. For that, there we are trying to do some bike parking as well and also do some sort of... Excuse me, some plantation and everything around the property. So that was our goal. Most of the things we have made some changes in the master design statement.
I have to say, I think this is the first application that has a soundtrack.
That is not my thing. I'm sorry.
Can I ask the staff, are they meeting their parking requirements?
We are happy with the one space per unit. Generally, it's one-point-five spaces.
But they are doing bike parking and so on. Does that help them?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Pennington. I met with the applicant. Please, if you might remember, last... We had a problem with getting the developer to be really plugged in and listen to the neighborhood and work with the neighborhood, to be very proactive, caring about the opinions of the neighborhood. So I want to really applaud the developer for having numerous community meetings. Just say that I'm strongly in support of the application. With that, I move approval of item thirty-three.
Do I have a second?
Claire, second. Claire, second.
Councilman Claire.
Aye.
Councilman Coffee.
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith.
Aye.
Mr. Pennington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens.
Aye.
Chairman Powers.
Aye. And I would just echo Commissioner Pennington's comments. I think it's always refreshing when applicants make that extra effort to deal with their neighbors, and I think it pays dividends. So thank you very much, and good luck with your development.
Okay, item thirty-four is PUD SP sixteen-twenty-eight-C. It's an application for a specific plan located at fourteen-twenty South Mustang Road. JJ, were you going to give a summary?
Yeah, this is a specific plan for a new Wendy's restaurant located in PUD sixteen-twenty-eight. We reviewed the specific plan, and it's typical of the new branding for Wendy's, the signage in the building. We had no issues with the specific plan meeting the requirements of the PUD. David Box is available if you have any questions.
Mr. Box, did you want to tell us something about this?
Yeah, David Box, this is a, I think, third now, specific plan you guys have had for this overall larger PUD that was approved, I think, in two thousand and eighteen. This is for a Wendy's. There is a bit of a unique situation here in that the building is actually built... There was a... Something happened at plan review when the permit was applied for, and it was issued. Typically, what we're looking at in these matters is whether or not the specific plan conforms to the PUD. I guess I would submit as my evidence that it conforms to the PUD is that the permit was issued, and plan review also agrees that it complies with the PUD requirements.
Commissioners, do we have any comments or questions or applicants? I don't have anyone specifically signed up to speak. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Coffee. I move approval of this PUD SP one-six-two-eight-C.
Claire, second.
Commissioner Claire.
Aye.
Mr. Coffee.
Aye.
Mr. Privet.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith.
Aye.
Mr. Pennington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens.
Aye.
Chairman Powers.
Aye. Just to be clear, did we get a vote from Mr. Privet after all?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Item thirty-five is SPUD twelve-oh-eight, an application to rezone eight-thousand-nine Melrose Lane from C three to SPUD twelve-oh-eight.
This is an application for a four-acre site west of Council on Melrose Lane to rezone from C three to permit a senior living facility. The only issues that staff identified was south across Melrose is a zoned heavy industrial and with a batch plant located on the property. In meeting with the applicant, we tried to come up with ways to mitigate that, and the applicant moved the actual building, the housing portion, as far north on the property as possible, separated it with parking, and put the garages along the south property line, and then increased landscaping trees along the south property line. Staff recommends approval with no technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire, did you have... Yeah, a couple of comments. To my knowledge, was not contacted by the applicant, so I've had no discussions with them. But that said, I've reviewed, and it's pretty straightforward, so I'm okay with providing a motion for approval if there's no further discussion. But that said, I've reviewed, and it's pretty straightforward, so I'm okay with providing a motion for approval if there's no further discussion or comment.
Let me ask if there's anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take that motion.
Sorry, Brenda Hadad, thirty fourteen Delaware Avenue, Joplin, Missouri. And I am representing Harmon and Kittle Properties. I did want to just reaffirm that we've done everything that we can to mitigate any issues from the batch plant. I think we have sufficient distance from them by putting the garage buildings between the interior corridor building that we'll be building. This will also be very green buildings, so it'll be very tight. It has additional insulation. And we are also committing to using the highest grade of residential filter in our system.
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else wishes to be heard? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Claire. I move approval of item thirty-five, S.P.U.D. one two zero eight.
Privet, second.
Mr. Claire.
Hi.
Mr. Coffee.
Hi.
Mr. Privet.
Hi.
Mr. Hinkle.
Hi.
Mr. Highsmith.
Hi.
Mr. Pennington.
Hi.
Mr. Cravens.
Hi.
Chairman Powers.
Hi.
Item thirty-six is S.P. five forty-three, an application to operate in mining and processing minerals and raw materials use in the A.A. district located at one zero four two zero northeast, one twenty-second street.
Hey, this is an application for sand, soil, and gravel excavation, typical type of use to see along the river throughout Oklahoma City. The only issue that staff came up with was preserving any healthy, mature trees. We asked for those in the required setbacks, but if you'll notice on the aerial, most of the required setbacks are, there are no trees. What the applicant has proposed is to retain all existing trees within a two-hundred-foot setback from the river. And then if you'll notice on the aerial, there is a stand of trees west of Post Road along the south property line. They agree to retain all those. They've submitted an exhibit subsequent to the staff report going out, and we, between now and council, we will, we can incorporate that as an exhibit to the special permit going forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Pennington, do you have anything to tell us about this?
I don't have anything to add about this, and I'm ready to make a motion. This is Commissioner Pennington.
Let me, let me ask if there's anybody else. I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item today?
We are signed up. We're signed up, the Murray's. Hello?
I don't have that information. Would you give us your name and address to the record, please?
Dave, David Enlund Murray, ninety-one thirty northeast one hundred and twenty-second street, Jones, Oklahoma, seven three oh four nine. And we did call in, and we're given instructions, and we talked to Cindy.
Well, I'd love to hear from you now.
Okay. Well, we, this sand pit will have a very negative effect on the quality of life and the loss of property value for literally hundreds of people that live in the general area, more severe for those of us who are close. And I think I'm right in saying that my house is the closest to the pit, although it, I know there's some other properties that are across the road south, or on the, across the road north. I'm on the south side of the street. And we bought this property in two thousand and built a new home here that's all designed to look out over this valley. And that property was all agricultural at the time. And we are very, very concerned about the things that will happen from the standpoint of the, our water table and the quality of the water that we have, the air quality with all the dirt and everything that's going to be done. We're very, very concerned about the fact that the sand pit from its original design could be expanded at a later date. And to give it a blanket approval right now, we don't think is right. The, we're worried about our property value going down and want to know if Schwartz Sand or whoever is going to reimburse us for our loss of property value. I want to say I don't know about the others, but this property is basically our retirement. So you're talking about taking away my retirement money so they can build a sand pit. I would like to ask the people, I don't want to take my time for everybody to answer, but have any of you ever lived next to a sand pit or even seen a sand pit in operation? I mean, it's horrible. We've just endured several, several years of the sand pit that was at one hundred and twenty-second street and Westminster. And, and the trucks pound this road all day long, every day. It quit about a year ago when they used up all their sand. And these trucks drive, pound this road, and I'm talking about fifty to one hundred trucks a day, every day. And so we're, and the other concern that I have is, we received zero notification. I got a phone call Monday of this week. And we would like to, if nothing else, get a decision delayed so we have time to retain legal advice. We, we don't know where the access road is going to be. I see it on, I see something on the map, but I don't know. We heard rumors several months ago that it was going to be right next to our property on. All those trucks zooming up and down there, the noise. We don't know what their operating hours will be. We know some, many of them work at night and have big lights up. There's wildlife that will be affected by all of this stuff, including eagles in this area, alone, let alone geese, ducks, and deer. It's, it just seems like the noise and the visual impairment of this, of this project. I mean, we're devastated, absolutely devastated. Would, would ask that any of you vote as if you were going to live here. It, it's, it's just uncomprehensible what the quality of life. Aren't they required to notify people?
They are indeed required to notify people, and I'll, I'll take this opportunity to ask staff if they are satisfied with the notice that went out.
Well, if you don't notify the person that's closest to it, how can you be, think that they did a good job?
Hold on just a minute, please, Mr. Murray. JJ.
Yes, I'm, well, I don't have the notice in front of me. I don't know who was notified.
I don't know who was notified either, but I know who was.
Mr. Murray, do you have a copy of the staff report?
Of the staff report?
Yes.
Is that the ten-page document?
Um, is it ten pages? No, it's, yes, ten pages, yes.
Yes, we have.
And there's a, there's a, there's an exhibit attached to it. I was going to refer to it if I can get you to tell me where your home is located.
It's at ninety-one thirty northeast one hundred and twenty-second street. I'm about two-tenths of a mile east of Douglas on the south side of the road.
Okay. Okay.
This is David Box. It's, his house is approximately a mile from where the, that, you know, the main mine operation will go. He is just east of Douglas, and we're just east of kind of post of where the main mine operation will be.
Okay.
Well, but the permit is to ground, clear up to here, clear up to our fence lines.
So it's approximately, David Box, it's approximately eight hundred plus feet, I think, from our site to them. We did, we did supply staff with a ownership list, certified by title company. I am confident notice was correct and proper. Additionally, this, these, as JJ rightly pointed out, these are very common applications on rivers within the city limits. This is one of, I think I can count four or five within one mile of here. This is a type of use that is heavily scrutinized at, frankly, not really the municipal level, more the state level. We must go through the State Department of Mines, we must go through the Corps of Engineers, and we must go through Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, all of which have received applications, some are weighed in on it. The very detailed reclamation and disturbance plan that was submitted to the Department of Mines was submitted as part of this application to serve as our program description, which goes through details of what will happen, when it will happen, how it will be revegetated, how it will be reclaimed as this process moves forward.
Did you have any sort of neighborhood meeting or outreach to the people who live in the surrounding area?
No, there was, there was no.
Excuse me, I was speaking to Mr. Box.
No, there was no protest letter filed. I did get a call from staff Monday that...
Excuse me, Mr. Murray, I'm speaking to Mr. Box. Give me a minute, please, and I'll get back to you.
I was advised Monday that somebody called in and was going to seek to call into this meeting. There was no contact information given, is my understanding, so there was just, there wasn't an opportunity to do so. But because no protest letter was filed, we weren't aware until Monday or Tuesday this week that anybody even had, had called in. Again, he is outside the notice area.
That's certainly understandable, but now that we are aware, I think it might be a good idea to take some time and do that, meet with your neighbors, see if you can answer whatever questions they may have. Commissioner Pennington?
Yeah, David, unless you can address some of these issues that the neighbors are concerned about, and just the couple of things that I wrote down was, could you address the noise? Could you address the traffic? And could you address the hours of operation?
Sure, David Box.
I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Well, my number one concern is that my property value, which is my retirement, is going to plummet because nobody in their right mind would buy this house.
Well, I think the, the question before us is whether, you know, this type of use is a use that is permitted within the limits of, of our ability to control it. And one of the ways that we do seek to control it is the impact on surrounding neighbors. I think what might be a good idea would be for us to take some time on this application, meet with the neighbors, let them hear about the operation, let them express their concerns, give the applicant the opportunity to see whether there are any kinds of mitigation measures that would be appropriate for this property, and then come back on it.
Yeah, it's David Box. Can I?
Appreciate that.
Mr. Box?
Yes, can I, is, is Mr. Schwartz, are you on the line with us? I'm not hearing him. I, I think we probably, the prudent thing to do is to defer this two weeks to allow some form of a meeting to happen, whatever that means, in April of two thousand twenty. But I will, could, Mr. Murray, could, could you tell me what your email address is so that I might reach out and try to coordinate getting a meeting with my client, myself, and Mr. Pennington if he was available to do so?
Well, I'm, my email address is D.J. Murray, M-U-R-R-A-Y, three zero four two at AOL dot com.
David Box, real quick, just, I want to make sure I have it correctly, D.J. Murray, which is M-U-R-R-A-Y, three zero four two at AOL dot com.
That is correct.
Mr. Murray, if I, if I might get your permission, I will make sure that Mr. Box has your phone number as well, and that way you too can see if there is some way that you can set up perhaps this kind of teleconferencing, meeting with your neighbors so that they can hear about the application, voice their questions and concerns, see if there's anything that can be done to mitigate those questions and concerns or answer those questions. And then my only real question for you, Mr. Box, is whether two weeks is going to be enough?
I'm thinking more like ten years.
Hey, this is Philip Swor...
Oh, I think my client, this is David. I think my client is on.
Can you hear me? Yeah, this is Philip Sworz. Can I, can I help you with some answers?
We're looking for a ten-year extension.
I think the, I think the main question on the table at the moment is whether you're willing to agree to a two-week continuance.
Mm-hmm. We have some deadlines, but we can, how, how long, two weeks?
Yes.
I, I don't object to that.
Well, thank you. In view of that, and if there's not anybody else who wishes or feels the need to be heard right now, today, I'll give it a minute. If not, then I will take a motion to continue this case, two weeks.
This is, this is Commissioner Pennington. I just want to say before I make the motion, David, if you would, it would be great if you could put all of these issues into one page of a F.A.Q. addressing the things that, that Mr. Murray mentioned specifically, the traffic, the noise, the hours of operation, just so we can have the facts very clearly laid out. It might also be helpful to have the map with the other mining operations that are also in the area so that everybody's working with the same set of facts.
Yes, sir.
And this is Commissioner Claire. I'll add one, I'll add one issue on there I think you guys might want to address, too, is the duration of the operation. How long is this site going to be active before it can be reclaimed?
Got it.
That's very helpful.
Can we get a contact information for Mr. Box?
Yeah, I will. This is David. I will, I will give you my email address. It is D. as in David, M. as in Michael, B-O-X at W-B-S-B-L-A-W dot com, and my phone number is two three two zero zero eight zero.
All right, I didn't get all of the, of the email.
Oh, sure. David Box, one more time. It's D. as in David, M. as in Michael, B-O-X at W-B-S-B-L-A-W dot com.
All right. Thank you. And...
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you, Mr. Murray, for participating.
Mr. Pennington asked me to send a one-page. Where would that be sent?
Oh, no, no, sorry, you don't need to send the, Mr. Murray, you don't need to send the, uh, one-page. We, we're asking Mr. Box to prepare that for you so that you'll have the information about what his plans are, his, his, uh, clients' plans are.
All right, and, and one thing that I would like to get in here, we feel like being an individual person that our chances of having any success are between, somewhere between zero and whatever's below zero. However, we, if we could just get the assurance that they're not going to come back and make this thing bigger than what the map shows now, that would have a, a major influence on us.
Well, all I can say about that, Mr. Murray, is that you're listening to, um, or eight, you have eight people listening to you with, um, open ears and open minds at the moment. Um, I assure you that you have absolutely just as much chance of prevailing on your concerns as, as anybody else, private, public, corporate, whatever. Um, and, uh, I think that if you can, uh, be specific about what your concerns are, it will really help the process along. You've been very clear today, and I appreciate that very much. I assume we'll hear from you again in two weeks.
Um, we will, and we're, uh, hopefully, uh, can put that neighborhood meeting together. Um, I'd be interested in doing that. Uh, Mr. Box initially said that the proper notification was sent out, and I do take exception to that because none of the people that we have talked to received the notification. So, the-
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask staff to take another look at that in the interim and make sure that our processes and procedures were followed. Sometimes there are things about notice that, that don't seem to make sense on their, uh, surface, but the process is one that is dictated by state statute, so all that we can do is follow it. Um, and I will ask staff to take another look and make sure that that process was followed.
Okay, the, uh, main thing I'd like to do is thank everyone for letting me rant off a little bit. I've been, uh, well, I've been very, very disturbed over this whole thing. Um, and the reason I asked for ten years' extension is that I won't be alive in ten years, I'm almost seventy-eight, so.
Well, I, you're very welcome. What, one thing that I would, uh, suggest that you do is, uh, do as much as you can to facilitate communication between yourself and your neighbors so that when there is a meeting, in whatever form it might take, with the applicant, it'll be, uh, it'll be quick and efficient to disseminate that information to anyone who's interested in participating.
Okay, we will do that.
Okay.
And again, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming.
All right. All right.
Commissioner Pennington?
This is Commissioner Pennington. I move, uh, that item thirty-six be continued to the next meeting.
Claire, second.
Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffee?
Aye.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Hi.
Item thirty-seven, it's an application, it's, uh, SPD eleven ninety-eight. It's an application to rezonate eleven thirty-eight North Blackwelder Avenue from R-two to SPD eleven ninety.
This is an application for infill residential development. Uh, it will allow a single-family through a fourplex on one lot. Uh, staff recommended approval, and there are no technical evaluation.
Commissioner Highsmith, did you have anything you wanted to tell us about this?
Sorry, give me, give me one second, I'm catching up a little bit. I've got so much paperwork in front of me. Um, no, I mean, I reviewed this. I think it's, to me, I think it's a smart use of the lot. Um, there's obviously, um, uh, a staff recommendation of approval. Uh, I think, you know, I, you guys know me, I lo- I think density is always, um, a high priority, especially with N Ward six. And, uh, I'm ready to make a motion, assuming everybody else is, is, uh, happy with it or doesn't have any comments.
Well, let me ask whether there's anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item today. Commissioners, do we have any other comments, questions of either staff or the applicant? If not, I'll take a motion.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Highsmith, I make a, uh, a, a motion to recommend approval of SPUD eleven ninety-eight, uh, to the City Council.
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Hi.
Item thirty-eight is SPUD twelve oh seven, an application to rezonate eleven six hundred north I thirty-five service road from AA to I-one.
This is a-
Oh, excuse me, from AA and I-one to SPUD twelve oh seven. Sorry, JJ.
That's right. This is an application for five-acre SPUD that's in an industrial area along the east side of I thirty-five. Uh, the application is for a mix of, uh, industrial and commercial uses. Uh, staff recommends approval with three TEs, and we aren't, at this point, we're not clear where the applicant stands on the technical evaluations.
Is our applicant present?
Yes, this is David Lewis with Overland Coach, one-one-one oh one Sorrentino Drive. And I, I was made aware that there were some technical evaluations a couple hours ago, uh, one of which, I believe, is the number of entrances to the property.
Yes.
And my only comment is there's a single entrance that exists. It's on the very south side of the frontage, and it is in track two, which is the rear tract. Track one up front, we originally thought that that might need its own entrance, and we can, uh, maintain a two-hundred-foot separation between entrances if that's a problem.
Okay, and there's a third, outdoor storage and service areas will be screened?
Yes, is that for both tracks or?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. Obviously, on the front track that, that's on the service road, that, that would be easy to accomplish. The rear tract is kind of hidden, uh, and I'm not sure exactly what area they're referring to as far as screening.
JJ, where's our screening on this lot?
I, I think we're more concerned about the front tract that's up against I thirty-five. Like he says, the back tract is fairly well-hidden between industrial development that exists now.
Okay.
There's, he has a business that, that sells and repairs motor coaches, and we're not concerned about screening those. It's just any equipment or outdoor storage that would, uh, parts and those kind of things.
So, can we come up with some language that will specify where the screening will be?
Yeah, on, on the track one, I, I understand that.
Is that agreeable, JJ?
I'm, I'm fine with deleting the requirement on track two, it's, it's fairly well-hidden already.
Okay. And the, um, one existing, uh, entrance onto track one, and I'm not quite sure I understand, you do wish to put in a second driveway that you can meet the two-hundred, uh, foot separation requirement? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And JJ, is that acceptable?
Yeah, he can meet the two-hundred foot. It, it might squeeze the, uh, the drive on the next property to the north a bit. That's our only concern. It would be preferable to have one shared driveway.
Mr. Lewis, what do you think about one shared driveway?
Uh, it's possible, but if I, if, if I separate the tracks, if I sell off one of the tracks, then that'll leave no, uh, it'd be more difficult to, to attain entrance into track one. You can't go too far back because there's a water drainage, uh, kind of along the existing, and a culvert that goes under the existing driveway. Um, you know, I suppose if that's something that'll kill it, then we could agree to it, but it, it would make more sense to have separate drives.
Okay, so as I understand it, we're talking about limiting the number of driveways, not, not within the SPUD, but on track one, to the one existing drive.
Well, but, but, the, the existing drive is actually on track two.
Oh, I see, okay. So, we're, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to clean up what it is we're agreeing to and not agreeing to. You cannot agree to TE number one, you're saying, because you cannot agree to limit the number of drives to just one. But you can agree to, um, TE number two, which was, which requires that two-hundred-foot, uh, separation, and you can agree to, um, outdoor storage and service areas being screened per code, which was, in this case, means on track one, not on track two.
That's correct.
Is there anything, uh, JJ, that you can suggest by way of a language or compromise that'll, that'll save us from just deleting TE number one?
Uh, no, if we can at least meet the two-hundred-foot separation.
And I think he is agreeable to that, so.
Well, this is Commissioner Claire. Couldn't, couldn't a cross-access easement be given for like the first hundred feet of the shared drive that would allow access to track one after that, from that south drive?
That, that's what we were suggesting, was shared access on the south, from the south drive.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, what I anticipate, a, a, a smaller building up front, more of a retail-type building, and then access to the rear would be the existing drive, which would be more, uh, higher, higher industrial.
This is, uh, Commissioner Highsmith. Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Claire's comments. Um, I understand that you might envision two different uses for the tracks, but, um, to me, a road is a road, and I think if we provide access from track two into track one, then that would solve your issue, and I believe it's a much better out tongue. Um, and frankly, I don't think that I can support the item unless you agree to that TE personally, and that's, that's my stance.
Okay. Then I, then I would agree to it.
So, we have all three TEs agreed. Let me ask you, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Pennington. I think this is technically in my ward, even though it says, uh, it says Ward six. Um, I move-
Correct.
-item thirty-eight, uh, making the following amendment to TE three, that it be, uh, specifically on, that, that TE three applied to, specifically to track one. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
Perfect. That's my note.
Claire, second.
I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Claire?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claire?
I have a motion second.
Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Hi.
Item thirty-nine is PUD seventeen sixty-one, an application to rezonate thirty-three seventeen Southwest Seventy-fourth Street from C-three to PUD seventeen sixty-one.
This is an application to rezonate an existing non-conforming apartment complex that's located in C-three. Uh, up until nineteen eighty-five, apartments were permitted in C-three. In eighty-five, that option dropped out of the code, and that's why we find many apartment complexes in the city still zoned C-three. Uh, this application will bring the complex into zoning compliance and also provide for, uh, commercial use of the, uh, corner parcel adjacent to I forty-four. There are two technical evaluations, and the applicant agrees to both of those.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, should we have any questions of, uh, the applicant or of staff? Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item?
Commissioner, uh, Powers, this is, uh, Commissioner Cravens. Uh, I would just make the recommendation, uh, for staff to consider on TE two, it's asking to provide a specific plan for new development. If there's really a concern about it, I think we should probably add some language that would allow the planning commission to review and approve, uh, or alter the items, uh, or the, um, provisions of the PUD. Otherwise, it, it's, it's almost certainly going to comply, so if there's some redevelopment concern, we've had this discussion in the past, I'd just be concerned about whether or not we would be affording a future planning commission the ability to actually review anything the way that TE is written. JJ, do you want to make your comment on that?
Um, that, that came from, from planning. I'd-
So, I think, uh, so, the, the point there was just the concern about, um, excuse me, the amenities, uh, because they, once that western portion goes away, uh, there'll be very, very little in the way of open space left, so it was just, how are they going to, so do that? So, are you, are you saying we should, uh, set a certain percentage, uh, so that the future commission has something to go from?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure I understood the full context of what authority you were trying to grant in a future review process because, I mean, as we know, what's going to happen is that they're going to read the PUD, and then they're going to put a specific plan application together that says it either complies or it doesn't. So, if, if you're wanting to specifically do something in the future, I just want to be sure that's memorialized in this TE.
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, you're right. It, it would be more specific to say that we wanted, uh, the, for example, there, there is a playground and ball fields over there, so if they, if they go away, then there's no, no active recreation and a tremendous loss of open space. So, uh, if the commission is, is okay with, uh, with, uh, kind of the loss of open space on that western side, our thinking was that, uh, we should, we should indicate that those active, uh, active recreational uses, the playgrounds, et cetera, should be, uh, moved somewhere else to the site. Um, you know, they, they would still have a very limited amount of open space, um, but at least they would have the, the recreational, the, the active recreational amenities.
I think that's a good point.
This is, uh, Commissioner-
This is David.
That is a very good point. There are, this is one among several apartment complexes in that area that have become severely dehabilitated and run down and in need of renovation, particularly in consideration-
dehabilitated and run down and in need of renovation, particularly in consideration of its locale and location near Oklahoma City Community College. And I think this is a very good example of what needs to happen, but I would certainly support any effort to maintain some green space and some recreational opportunities at this one of many complexes that needs some rehabilitation.
This is David Box. We can certainly agree to something. I mean, I do think that's part of what the TE number one is trying to get to, is the percentage of open space that we have agreed to. If you look at the additional criteria laid out in the PUD, I don't think you'll find that it's very different from other PUDs in terms of, you know, facade and building height and those types of things. So there is something to check it against. What I've done in the PUD application is I have laid out specifically that, you know, all the things that are there now shall be permitted to remain. In the event that there is new building or new construction, the following shall apply. So I've accounted for what that means in terms of, you know, now that we agree to the specific plan application, that there would be something to check it by, that being the regulations contained within the PUD.
I understand what you're saying, David. This is Commissioner Cravens again. What I would say is, and based on the discussion that I just had with Jeff Butler, the language should be amended to read this way, provide a, for TE number two, provide a specific plan for new development that includes new and/or relocated amenities for the existing apartments, and that allows the planning commission to approve or amend the amenities provided in the specific plan.
This is David, I'm fine with that.
And Jeff Butler, does that, did I appropriately memorialize what you all were trying to accomplish?
Yes, I believe so. Is amenities specific enough? Do we need to say something like, I don't know, playgrounds or active amenities or, trying to think of a better word, but maybe that's sufficient? Would that be meaningful for you guys in the future if this came back in a year?
Absolutely. And I would just say that not be more specific, frankly.
Okay.
I think, this Commissioner Cravens, I think I'm in agreement. It would be clear there was a, an effort to try to review those amenities. I think it would be a bit more broad, that language, that way, as opposed to try to refine, define it further.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good to me.
This is David. Can you say that one more time, Commissioner Cravens, what you're suggesting, the language?
Of course. So that the revised TE two would read, provide a specific plan for new development that includes new and/or relocated amenities for the existing apartments, and that allows the planning commission to approve or amend the amenities provided in the specific plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, where are we? Does anybody else who wishes to be heard? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Coffee. I move approval of PUD 1761 with the technical evaluations one and two as amended by Commissioner Cravens.
This is Commissioner Cravens, I'll second the motion.
Mr. Claire?
Have a motion, second. I'm sorry. I have a motion, second, to approve item number 39.
Mr. Claire?
Take the roll for us, please.
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item 40, it's an application by...
What is happening?
Somebody's doing something, apparently.
Somebody's disposing of evidence.
Yeah, let me try again here.
Commissioner Hinkle rattling his popcorn shack.
PUD 1759 is an application to rezone 7600 Southwest 15th Street from PUD 1542 to PUD 1759.
This is an application for 472 acres that represents a 49-acre expansion of the existing landfill at 15th and Council. The site's located in a heavy industrial area. We didn't identify any technical evaluations, and recommended approval.
Commissioners, do we have any questions of our applicant or the staff? Is there anybody else? Who, I'm sorry, hello? Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
This is Commissioner Coffee. I move approval of PUD 1759 and recommend such to City Council.
Hinkle, second. Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item 41 is PUD 1758, an application to rezone 10928 Southwest 15th Street from AA to PUD 1758.
This is a 30-acre parcel that includes an existing church. The PUD will allow for the church's continued use and office, commercial, and assisted living uses on their owner of the property. Affirmative approval with four technical evaluations. The applicant agrees with TEs one, three, and four, and would like to amend TE two to state that the existing curb cuts that are there now will remain until the development occurs, and then the new curb cuts will align, and staff is okay with that amendment.
This is David Box.
I'm sorry.
Good.
I'll go ahead, Commissioner Powers, I'll let you ask your question, then I'll jump in.
JJ, isn't that something that would be the case in any event? I mean, by agreeing to a technical evaluation that requires them to line up, I mean, until some development occurs, they wouldn't have to take that action in any event, would they?
I agree with that. I think the applicant just wants it to be specifically clear in the PUD.
And that's okay with me, it really is. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Box?
Yeah, David Box. In addition to the TEs, in visiting with Commissioner Coffee, she would also like us to add a TE number five to remove the use unit that would allow a restaurant with alcohol, and instead make it eating establishment sit-down alcohol not permitted. That was her request, I've asked my client, they have agreed to that. And in addition, my client would like to, if possible, provide for an EMD level three sign rather than the two, only for the church use.
Well, that's a problem for me, so...
Well, this is Commissioner Claire, I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, yes.
Is this the drive? Is that a private drive to access the assisted living in the back?
Well, at some point, it'll, I mean, so there's three curb cuts now. One is for the church, one is an oil lease road, and then there's another just curb cut there. So really what we're asking for, I think JJ is right, just out of an abundance of caution, we wanted to just make sure that TE was clear that whenever we do develop, we'll have to meet that alignment requirement. But right now, it doesn't really serve anything, we just don't want to go to expending the funds to go create curb cuts that aren't needed now to align to a drive. Does that answer your question?
Right. Well, I guess my concern is, you've provided a lot of office, a lot of retail space, and assisted living, and you've got one point of access for all of these. And I actually don't see the fire marshal allowing that. Having done some of this before, he's going to theorize that you've got a vehicular collision there, if the entrance and the fire truck and ambulance can't get back to the assisted living facility when needed. So I guess my concern is the number of access points, that there's not enough.
You don't think that three is enough?
Is there cross-access from the church to the assisted living facility?
Yes, there will be the ability to have cross-access.
Okay, that's not clear in the exhibit provided.
Yeah, but there is no limitation on cross-access, so we do believe that the three curb cuts would be enough.
Those are kind of two different things, though. You're saying it's possible there would be cross-access. I think Commissioner Claire is saying he wants to make sure that there is cross-access.
Sure. So my client controls the whole site, but we, I mean, whatever I think would make Commissioner Claire and others satisfied, we're happy to add that in. I don't know if we'd want to force all the traffic through the curb cut that is utilized by the church, but there would be two additional curb cuts, obviously on Southwest 15th, that would be utilized, so we can say cross-access.
And I'm okay with that, just in the exhibit that I'm looking at, there's no connection to those curb cuts. I can see where they are on the graphic, but the only connection that I can visibly see is north-south through the middle of the mixed use to get to the assisted living.
Got it.
Anyone else?
We can, I guess we can just say cross-access shall be, you know, provided.
Um, David Box, this is Commissioner Cravens. Couple things, I actually, I'm glad you clarified that, because I'm in agreement with Commissioner Claire, the exhibit provided, our exhibit B in our packet was not entirely clear what was on there, because there's like a oil well service road that seems to cut the whole thing off from the church, or from the property of the West, the Good Shepherd property of the West. A couple other things, your TE five, would it not just be easier to eliminate 8300.38? Doesn't that do the same thing without adding a TE that seems to confuse the MBS?
Well, I don't want to delete, I don't want to delete the eating establishment sit-down use unit. We want to be able to have a restaurant, Commissioners.
So could you just amend that, could you just amend the use unit to prohibit alcohol? Is that, I mean, is that, and by the way, can we even still do that? I didn't think we could do that anymore.
That's a staff question.
That's a legal question.
JJ?
I would defer to legal...
Dan?
David, clarify me, the number of feet from a school that alcohol is prohibited?
I don't know that that prohibition exists as it relates to restaurants. My understanding, and please correct me, my understanding is it relates to bars, but not restaurants that might just serve alcohol. If you think about Northwest Highway, just west of Heffner Parkway, you have that Lutheran church that's right there on, I believe that would be Portland, and right next to that are two separate restaurants, I think one's on the border, one's a barbecue place, both of which that serve alcohol. So there is no prohibition as it relates to restaurants that just happen to serve alcohol next to churches.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
So maybe we just leave it alone, and we just keep it as it.
The one or two concerns I had were from parents of children who attended that school, so I personally don't have a problem with leaving the alcohol in there if that's what the church preferred, so I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I can go either way on that issue, it doesn't really, I'm not firm on that.
This is David. I would prefer to just keep it, and if it's a restaurant that doesn't serve it, so be it, I mean, there's not many restaurants anymore in 2020 that you see open up as a standalone restaurant that don't serve. So my preference would be to keep it, it provides more flexibility.
Well, I think particularly, I think particularly if you had a little Italian restaurant that wanted to serve wine, I think it would be easier to leave it in there now than to go back later and try to put it in.
David, is the church operating the restaurant, or is...
No, they would be selling it.
Okay.
Was that Commissioner?
Privet, sorry.
Privet? Oh, okay.
Well, this Commissioner, again, one more issue. I'm not overly bothered in this instance because of the setbacks created by the stream or whatever you want to call that there that's running in between the two tracks, but why did the application not create two separate tracks, one for the assisted living or senior living unit, and one for the retail up front, just to insulate further the neighborhood to the south? I mean, what is that, do you know what that distance is from the neighborhood to the south to, what would be the south boundary of your property line? I, it's not really that conceivable that that would be two-three, but I'd rather be overly sensitive to that, than sort of, you know, undersensitive.
Yeah, I can, due to the nature of this call, and I'm sitting in my living room, I can actually pull it up. So it looks like nearest structure to our property line is over 515 feet.
Okay.
And within that 515 feet, you've got trees and the creek and all of that.
Yeah, that, yeah, that assuages my concern. I'm fine with that, that's a long distance, so...
Okay. Can I ask if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, I think we're probably ready for a motion.
Well, this is Commissioner Claire, I have one more question.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so are we adding, do we need to add a TE to address access points?
It's a staff question, do we need a TE?
I thought we added a requirement for cross-access that would satisfy.
Okay.
This is David Box, I'm fine with that, and then I'd like to know if, I understand Commissioner Powers' position on the EMD sign, are others concerned? I mean, typically, I think churches are treated a little differently because of the wide range of services and other things they provide. Typically, you see schools, churches provide a little more leeway on EMD signage.
What's the main difference between EMD two and three?
Three allows you to have some animation. Yeah.
This is Commissioner Coffee. Chairman Powers, could you review the technical evaluations for me? I had lots of conversations going on at the same time.
So as they stand, as they stand currently, TE number one, buildings and paving shall be located outside the 100-year floodplain. We're going to limit the number of driveway cuts to three along Southwest 15th Street, and align the entrances with those north of Southwest 15th at the time of development. Remove the statement, except as modified herein from the landscaping regulations. That just must be a minimum of 25 feet from an adjacent residential district.
All right. And we did not add five?
We did not.
And we did not add TE five?
We did not. We talked ourselves out of it.
All right, basically, it's written.
So where are we addressing the cross-access? Is that just a refined MDS?
That was what I understood JJ to say.
David agreed to add a TE, since cross-access shall be provided with the church.
Okay, so number five, cross-access shall be provided.
You know, I'm not sure that, and this is Commissioner Clare, I'm not sure I'm happy with that because, again, in the event of emergency response, I'm not sure that they're going to know that they need to enter at the church to get back to the assisted living facility.
There will be two additional access points, other than the church.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
I'm good with that then, as long as that's clear, I'm good.
Have I asked already if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard? Oh, yeah, we're there on that.
Outside of Commissioner Powers, were there other concerns about the EMD for the church?
So how are we dealing with that, David? By TE, or are you just going to amend that? Are you just going to amend the MDS?
Whatever staff would like. But we could always just add the TE and restrict it, restrict the level three to the church.
Add a TE says that.
Okay, so now we have two more TE. TE number five is cross-access will be provided between the church and the rest of the property. I don't know how else to say that. TE number six, level three EMD signage will be allowed for the church only. Anybody else?
This is Commissioner Coffey. What was TE six?
Level three EMD signage will be allowed for the church only. That's the TE that's being proposed, anyway. I myself am opposed to that idea, but.
This is Commissioner Clare. So with the cross-access from the church, does that also need to include cross-access from the church and two other access points?
I think the two other access points already show and are already there.
Yeah, they're already there.
No, that's the thing. They don't, they don't, they don't show. There is one north-south drive that goes up through the retail, the mixed use, and terminates at the assisted living. The other access point is a well road. There is no, there's no access from that. I'm presuming that's a gravel road. That's not going to get used at all.
Well, I think probably, I think we probably ought to state that at the time the property is developed, there is a gravel road. In fact, it's used quite often for overflow parking. There's a lot of open field baseball nets and soccer games and things that go on in there. And that little gravel road is used pretty extensively, although it's casually used. But I think maybe at the time of development would be a better way to say that. It's pretty casual back in there. The neighborhoods all use it. It's just pretty casual. Maybe at the time of development is when that ought to happen.
Commissioner Clare, what is it that you're proposing exactly?
So if we're going to add a TE that talks about cross-access from the church, I would just say that we provide cross-access from the church and two access points to the retail, mixed use, and assisted living portions of the development at time of development.
This is David Box. I'm fine with that. There will be a total of three.
And I'm good with that.
Correct.
So do we want to say there'll be a total of three, or do we want to say there'll be cross-access?
I think it's, this is David, I think it's both. The PUD already has three. The PUD specifies three access points.
This is Commissioner Cravens. Can I make a suggestion for language on TE five? Try to help this out. We could just say that TE five would require cross-access with the parcel to the west, and would require no less than three access points?
Is that acceptable, Mr. Box?
This is David Box, yes.
Okay. Is that acceptable, Commissioner Clare?
Yes.
Okay.
This is Jeff. Can I have just a point of clarification? How large is the EMD sign that's being proposed? Or what's the maximum that you guys, is it in the MDS?
This is David Box. Let me check real quick. We have a max of one-hundred-and-fifty square feet in the MDS.
JJ, how does that compare with kind of the standard?
I believe the code allows EMD up to fifty percent of the maximum allowed with an entire sign.
So did you say up to fifty percent of that allowance for the whole site? Was that what you said? Okay. Any idea what that would be?
For every two-hundred feet of frontage, you get two-hundred square foot of sign. So if that's a C-three zone piece of property, then they'd be allowed a hundred square foot of digital, because you get fifty percent, if memory serves me correctly.
That's correct.
So for every two-hundred feet of frontage, you get an additional two-hundred square foot sign. Or up to what the lineal frontage is, one foot per lineal foot. So if you have three-hundred, I think you could have a two-hundred and a one-hundred square foot sign.
But I thought we were limiting EMD to the church.
Yes.
Level three to the church.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what is the, so we're not, it's limited to EMD one, or is it?
Three for the church.
EMD three. Asking for EMD three, but not requiring a variance to the sign code as far as the size goes.
Correct. Unless it's specified in the PUD, they want a specific size. It would fall back to the base zoning district.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Cravens. I think if people are concerned about this, and I can't, I wish I was in the room so I could lead the room. But if people are concerned about the EMD signage, that goes back to my point about having the site divided into separate tracks, because then we could make track one the church track, and limit EMD signage to track one, and prohibit it on the tracks, the adjoining track two. If that's the concern, that's the best way, I think, to make that clear, because I'm not sure that we all are understanding what we're actually limiting with this EMD signage, since it applies to the entirety.
I agree with that.
This is David Box. I think we can tie the EMD, I think we can tie it to the church without having to break the track. I think you'd tie it to the church, to the use.
But if, but if it's not, if it's not separated out as a tract, the measurements of square footage and lineal footage and all of that don't have anything to relate to.
But I agree with that. Commissioner Cravens, again?
We, this is David. We can between now and council break that tract out, if that's what we need to do.
Or between now and the next time we meet, you could break it out and present it to us then.
Well, I mean, we'd like, I don't know that we need to burden an entire docket with this small issue. If we can break it out, I think staff has the direction. We can break it out by that church track, and then tie it to that track.
Or we can drop the request for an EMD three sign.
This is David. We certainly don't want to do that.
David, I mean, I think we can get there with that, as long as staff is comfortable. We'd have to add yet another TE, in my view. TE seven would separate the church parcel into track one, and the balance of the property into track two. And then you can define that with a site plan before council. I think that, I think staff probably is comfortable with that, but I don't want to speak for them.
This is David. I'm fine with that. JJ is fine with that.
So if you put the church in track one, they're going to get their own sign, and that's where the level three EMD comes into play. But the retail that is to the west of that, they get their own sign and what is allowed there.
This is David. The only EMD sign we need is for the church.
So you're not going to want anything more than a tenant's sign for the retail?
That is correct.
Okay.
I commit with that.
I can live with that. Hinkle, I can live with that.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
This is Commissioner Coffey. I move a recommendation to City Council of PUD 1758, including technical evaluations of now number one through six.
I think it's one through seven, isn't it?
I'm sorry, one through seven.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion, and just for confirming for the record, I will read those technical evaluations into the record in case there's any objection.
Go ahead.
Technical evaluation, technical evaluation number one would not be changed. Technical evaluation number two would be amended so that existing curb cuts shall be allowed to remain. New curb cuts shall align. TE number three would be unchanged. TE number four would be.
Commissioner Cravens, I don't, I don't think that's quite an exactly correct statement of TE number two. I don't think that.
Okay, how would you like to read?
What I understood was that all of the curb cuts, whether existing or not, will align once the development occurs. That they can stay in place for now, but that they'll align once the development occurs. Not necessarily different curb cuts.
This is Commissioner Coffey. That's also my understanding.
Okay, so the language for TE two would read, limit number of driveway cuts to three along Southwest 15th Street, and align entrances with those north of Southwest 15th. Existing curb cuts to remain, curb cuts shall align once development begins?
I think that's fair. Or at the time of development.
Okay. Curb cuts shall align at the time of development. Is that clear to you, David Box?
This is David Box, yes.
Okay. TE number three remains unchanged. TE number four remains unchanged. TE number five shall read, require cross-access with parcel to the west, no less than three access points. TE number six, provision nine-point-nine-point-five of the master design statement shall be restricted to the church use. And number seven further clarifies that track one shall be designated as the church site, and track two is the balance of the parcel, which shall be further defined prior to City Council in agreement with staff.
The thing that's missing from that recitation is that the level three EMD on item number six, TE number six.
So would be nine-point-nine-point-five shall be amended to allow for EMD level three? Is that what you're, is that the change that needs to be made there?
I believe that's right.
David Box, are you comfortable with those TEs as read, six and seven?
Will you read the last one again, just so I'm clear?
Yeah. Track one, yep, track one shall be the church site. Track two shall be the balance of the subject parcel, which shall be further defined and approved by staff before City Council.
Yeah.
And I guess I should just ask, is staff comfortable with those changes as read?
Yes, you can do that.
Commissioner Coffey, are you in agreement with us bringing amendments to your motion?
Commissioner Coffey?
Yes.
I second the motion as amended.
Commissioner Clare?
I have a motion. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Clare?
Aye.
Mr. Coffey?
Aye.
Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkel? Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Sorry, I was, my mic was off. Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item forty-two is C-7152, preliminary plat of Council Ridge North, and it's located south of Northwest 164th Street and west of North Council Road, with a variance to section five-point-three-point-one, point D, point five of the subdivision regulations. And Jared Martin will give us a summary of this application.
Okay, this is Jared. The developer is proposing one-hundred-and-forty-eight single-family residential lots and four common areas, on thirty-nine-point-three-three-nine acres, yielding a gross residential density of three-point-seven-six dwelling units per acre. The site was zoned PUD 240 in nineteen-eighty-five. Staff has recommended approval subject to nine technical evaluations. The applicant agrees with TE one, four, six, seven, eight, and nine. Regarding the variance request, that would be for TE three. The applicant is requesting a variance relating to the interconnection within quarter sections. That would be to connect to the west. There is a physical barrier over there. There is a creek and associated flood plain in that direction. The subdivision regulations allow consideration of physical variances, or physical barriers for the variance. Six affirmative votes would be necessary for the approval. Regarding TE five, staff is requesting that the applicant provide a connection to the east across the creek that will connect to a collector's street that will be built within a later phase of the development. The applicant has agreed, so we would like to amend TE five to say that the preliminary plat should be amended to contain at least one connection across the creek to the east side for connection to the future north-south collector's street. Again, the applicant has agreed to that change. And then with regard to TE two, the applicant does not agree. TE two requires fire suppression for each home. In this development, the development has been determined to be outside of the rural response time for fire. Mike Wilson with the Fire Marshal's Office is on the line to discuss that one when needed. Steve Rollins with Arc Engineering is the engineer for the project. He is also available for further discussion, and we do have one protester that has signed up and called in as well.
This is Commissioner Highsmith. I'm going to go ahead and.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and jump in on, on TE two. Uh, we've talked about this before and, and, uh, I am going to echo my previous statements, but maybe even, uh, you, you guys can disagree obviously with the way that I'm going to state this, but, um, as a, as a, you know, professional architect, uh, life safety is our number one concern. Um, whenever it comes to plan review on any type of, of project that we're working on, uh, that life safety typically revolves around, uh, fire and, you know, what can occur within the built environment. Um, it, the Fire Marshal's job, uh, he can, he can state otherwise as he wants, but my understanding is to protect life and, uh, safety for anyone in any part of the city in a built structure. And if the Fire Marshal says that these homes, uh, present a potential danger to the occupants and asks for fire suppression, there is no chance that I'm going to go against that, um, from, from the commission. Because to me, that, we are making a decision that isn't about zoning or about the things that we typically take into account as a, as a commission, but we are considering life safety issues. And I will not accept the liability, um, as a commissioner for the potential loss of life that, that could occur. You guys can say that's silly. I mean, maybe people, you know, just fundamentally disagree with, with what I'm talking about here. But for me, that's what it comes down to. I cannot support the item unless either the applicant agrees to TE two or the Fire Marshal changes his opinion. But for me, it's a non-starter. I can't, I can't support the application unless something is resolved on that.
To go along with that-
Thank you.
Commissioner Pennington, I, I, I agree with Asa and just want to add this question though. Are the homes that are the existing homes, do they have those systems or do we know the answer to that question?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Steve Rollins with Arc Engineering Consultants, one thirty-five Deer Creek Road in Edmond, representing the applicant. Um, to answer your question, no, uh, the existing homes to the south, if that's what you're referring to, they do not have fire suppression. And, uh, this is basically an expansion of that development directly to the south, Council Ridge.
Uh, with all due respect, that doesn't make the slightest bit of difference to me. The fact that we have revised our standards or improved our requirements, uh, is, and if in fact the Fire Marshal thinks that it's necessary, I mean, I'll leave that door open, but, uh, you know, it, it doesn't matter whether surrounding properties are or not sprinkled, in my view. Um, you know, this is the requirement that's being, uh, um, imposed, if that's the right word, now. And, you know, there's been a lot of development out in this area over a lot of years. Whether it was all done at a time when that kind of technology was even available, I don't know. So, uh, whether, whether it is or is not applicable to other homes in the areas is not controlling, in my view. Anybody else?
This is Commissioner Cravens. I need you to hear from Fire.
Mr. Wilson available?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This is Steve Rollins again. I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I listened to a planning commissioner meeting, meeting a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago where this was discussed extensively, um, and, and Commissioner Cravens bought up then that, that this would come up again. Um, and he's right, here we are. This is a very desirable part of the city. It's in the Deer Creek School Systems, uh, on the outskirts of the city limits where a lot of people like to live and buy homes. Uh, we've got water, we've got sewer, we've got excellent roads in the area. Northwest one hundred and sixty-fourth was just repaved, the structures rebuilt. Um, so, I mean, the entire area is ready for development as it should be. Um, also within that meeting, um, I believe Mr. Butler discussed, um, a discussion about putting a fire station in this area. And, um, the city, the city should prioritize a fire station for this area. I believe that it is necessary, but to shift that burden from the city to the home buyers, ultimately is who you're shifting it to, to install these systems and maintain them, uh, throughout the life of the home, I, I just don't believe is the correct thing to do, so.
Well, I, I'm going to jump back in. Uh, this is Commissioner Highsmith. Um, to, to, you know, the, the, the public pays for those fire stations either way. Um, I, I understand you're, you're saying, well, the difference is we're asking for a specific group of, of homeowners to pay for it. But if we imply, if, if we as a commission applied this rule unilaterally, then of course you would get your fire station because the pressure would, would develop and the city would agree. But the more that we allow these to occur, the less likely, you know, that, that, uh, is going to happen sooner rather than later. That's my opinion. Again, like, it doesn't matter to me what argument that we could even state today. It's a life safety issue. If, if people could be hurt by this decision, it's a decision that I won't, uh, I won't be involved in the approval of. So, but again, sorry, just wanted to jump back in on that one comment.
Well, I appreciate that comment. I mean, I, I think, eh, like you, the, the life safety, uh, health issues are the, always the most compelling, uh, among those that we are called upon to make. And I, to me, the, the relative cost is just, uh, a good counter to that, so. Do we have someone from Fire to come talk to us or not?
Yes, Mike Wilson's on. I think he may be muted. Are you there, Mike?
Star six yourself, Mike.
There he is.
There it is. That did it. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Well, I, I was using my mute button, but apparently, like you say, you got a star six.
Yes.
But anyway, yes, um, are, there's a very big concern for the Fire Marshal's Office and specifically for the Fire Chief on all of the development that we're getting in these outlining areas that we are going to have, we already know we're going to have a problem getting there in a timely manner. And, um, and the only thing that, that has come up i- is that if they sprinkle, then it gives people time to get out of the dwelling. So that it's not as, as big of an issue on how quickly we get there, that they can be able to get out of the dwelling before, uh, the fire gets too much bigger. But this, like we'd said before, this is relatively, um, new for Oklahoma. Many other states are doing it, but for Oklahoma anyway, it's, it's new technology. I've been over in the Fire Marshal's Office for almost ten years now. And it's, it's been sprinkler, we had residential sprinklers before then, uh, before I came over here. So it's, it's, it's still newish technology, but it's really needed for these, basically is these urban-type lots that you're putting on the outskirts of the city limits. Because we just don't have, uh, the, uh, infrastructure to, to get there in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Mike, was this, was this a change of ordinance that was adopted or was this a policy that was changed?
This is the, uh, Fire Chief's, uh, recommendations for these developments when we do these plats. Um, the, having it be in, in ordinance would be in the part of, be in the building code, uh, when it's adopted. And no, it's not in that code, uh, as a requirement for every house in Oklahoma City. Um, but it has on a national basis and in the national code, it is there as a requirement. But Oklahoma has always, uh, taken that requirement out. And Oklahoma City has followed the state and taken it out of our, uh, amendments like the state did. Our problem comes into these, in, in most areas of the city, it's not necessarily warranted that you should sprinkle, you know, a house because you've got a fire department that can get there in a short amount of time. Our problem comes into a bigger problem in these outlying areas that we don't have a very quick response time. And that's, and that's even counting that that closest station is the one that can get there quickest. If they're out doing something else, then it, then the responding station will be even further away and take, you know, twenty, thirty minutes to get there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Here's, here's, yeah, I'd like to make some comments if this is my word. Um, here's my, here's my concern, I think, that everybody should, should think about. I'm, I'm all on board with fire safety. The, the issue for me is that the case we just approved on this item went to council and was approved. And they're aware of that argument. And I think there at some point has to be an ordinance, there has to be an adoption of a building code that provides for this. Because while it may not be as paramount as life safety to adjust a policy that this significantly shifts the economics of a development on the fly, is simply not a good way for the city to do business with it, with the development community. It's not, this, this is not the way to go about this. These people have no notice of this. And so plans get put into motion, developments begin to get constructed in phases, and then you go turn the economics upside down because we come to the realization that there's going to be development here. Um, I don't agree with the premise at all that, um, that we should sprinkle these homes in an effort to get the fire station built. That's just a matter of the capital being allocated, um, within plans that I, I admit are probably not funded anytime soon. There's probably not going to be a fire station anywhere anytime soon, which is certainly a consideration. And, and I, I respect people's opinion for having that. But the, the other side of that is that we're making this decision on the fly without notice. And I would point out that today, in, in this meeting, we just approved the construction of an apartment complex with twenty dwelling units per acre that is barely a mile and a half from this exact location. So we have these lines-
And it will be fully sprinkled.
Okay, and that, and that, so that, that's where the difference in the code is, is that, but my point is this expansion of homes, it's really about density, Mike? It's coming out here. So it, we're building apartment complexes out here now. I mean, thi- this is, this area is going to continue to see this pressure. This isn't some far, long, remote area. This is an area where, uh, we looked at the plats at the last meeting, there's been all kinds of plats approved out here. Are you guys communicating this to them? Are you reaching out to make sure these people know about this? Because it, it, it's just not, this is not a good way to do business. I'm sorry, it's not, um-
I don't, I don't know what, this, this commission and this item on this is a staff report that is for our review. You have proposed a preliminary plat. We have not seen a bunch of little bitty lots on this land before until you proposed this plat and we said, no, we feel it needs to be sprinkled. So I'm not sure what you're saying, that council has already knows you're going to do this. Because you haven't done a plat here before, have you?
Mike, I didn't propose anything. I'm a planning commissioner, I'm not the applicant.
Okay.
This is Steve Rollins.
The reasoning, the reasoning is the safety of the occupants. You're not going to get a fire station that don't have the infrastructure, even if we did have a lot more money, to have the total number of fire stations everywhere throughout the city, uh, to handle and, and keep people in a, in, in what we call the urban response time. And if people want to build these small lots out in outlying areas that are a long way away from a fire station, we're saying, okay, but sprinkle. And we have sprinkled subdivisions before.
Mr. Rollins, what phase of the development?
Who, who wants to go first?
Mr. Rollins, did you have something to say?
I asked Mr. Rollins what phase of the development this is.
This will actually be the fourth phase of the development and the property's been zoned since nineteen eighty-five in PUD two forty.
So I, and I, to that, I'll just say, I don't think that in nineteen eighty-five, you know, we, we signed a pass that said, you know, you're not going to be subject to any, you know, additional improvements or requirements of the city. I think, you know, that the idea that, that we're doing this to require, in, in order to force the city to build a fire station is nonsense. It doesn't have anything to do with that. The idea is, I mean, if, if your concern is that the development community doesn't understand or know this is coming, then I think that the response to that is for us to be consistent in our application of the requirement. If this is something that is being, um, um, told to us should be done as a life health safety matter, then to me, that's a simple decision to make. The fact that it may cost more, that is unfortunate perhaps, although I, the trade-off there is, as, um, Mr. Wilson was suggesting, that we're continuing to see urban density development at these, in these outlying areas where the city simply does not have the infrastructure in place, in this case fire protection, that is, you know, built to urban density. I mean, that's just, and so, yeah, that's going to have to be absorbed by the development itself.
Uh, this is Commissioner Highsmith. I, I'd like to ask a, a couple of clarifying questions to Mike Wilson. Um, it's, it's my understanding that building code is adopted by city ordinance and that this would be a building code item. So doesn't that mean that we have adopted this as part of ordinance?
It is in the code, but Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma have always amended this section that says that all houses have to be sprinkled and taken that out of the code.
So this is not in the code, this is, uh, part of Fire abuse comments?
It's not in our, you know, our adopted code, no. Because the, the code, the way it's written, would require every house to be sprinkled, period.
Oh, so, but, but not the adopted code of Oklahoma City?
Right, we specifically amended the code and took that provision out, um, mainly due to a lot of residential developers who are involved in the, in the, uh, adoption of that code. Um, and Fire has been more and more pushing that, no, we want to leave that in because we're seeing, you know, what we're seeing. Developments moving out, getting further away from every, all the services.
Well, that, that does, that does temper, you know, my, my original comments because I did believe that this was, um, you know, we, we don't do, I don't professionally do a lot of projects out in these areas, but I did understand that, uh, uh, apparently wrongly, that it was a part of our ordinance, um, and that's what we were basing this on. It is tougher if, if we're applying this, you know, by project, I mean, understanding that you guys might apply it unilaterally based on the, the specifics of the project, if that's not something that can be anticipated by the developer prior to the review, um, that is, that's, that's a tough one for me.
Um, I would like to clarify that that building code that's presently, um, memorialized is adopted by council. Is that correct?
Yes.
Look, I know this is, um, it's, it's a, by the way, it's Commissioner Cravens again. Um, I, I know this is a, a difficult issue and I don't want to seem to, to my fellow commissioners that I am insensitive about life safety. I, I, I am not. If, if somebody came in and asked for a variance or something from the code to do sprinkler and we'd adopted an ordinance as a city through council for that to be applied, I- and we'd adopted an ordinance as a city through council for that to be applied, I, I would have no sympathy at all for Mr. Rollins or anybody else. Um, and I, I'm, you know, I'm not saying that the city can't, uh, change those things, I'm saying there's a process for the city to change those views and they've continuously adopted these things without that provision. And now, staff, I'm sorry, but staff is making a unilateral move to amend that as a matter of policy, and that's just not the right way to go about this. Uh, we're all going to have our own opinion on the issue, we don't need to belabor it anymore, that's where I am on it. Um, I'd love to hear other commissioners' thoughts, but it, it's, th- there's just a right way and a wrong way to do these things, they're ordinances, and that's why there's a legislative process. I, you know, this is very frustrating just from the standpoint that I feel like we're in-rounding the, the, the way it should be done to accomplish something. If it needs to be done, that's what eight people plus the mayor get elected to vote on.
But what's in front of us right now is a preliminary plat, and that's on us.
And, and part of the plating review process asks the fire department for their review, and we look at life safety, and that's where this comes from, is our review of this plat, and we're saying what's needed. Uh, I, I don't know how else to say it, that, yes, we anticipate that as a fire department, we're going to push more and more to just get all residential sprinkled. You know, that, it may never happen, but that's what the fire department is going to try to push for, so that we don't have any loss of life in residential structures. But, that may take a long time. But on these new developments, that we see a problem, we physically, we can identify the problem, that we can't get there fast enough, we have come to that this is the alternative that someone can do, and, uh, we feel it's safe. That, yes, it's up to the planning commission to make the decision.
I respect that, Mike, Commissioner Cravens.
This is Commissioner Hinkle. On an average, a three thousand square foot house, how much additional money are we talking about to sprinkle it within a thousand dollars?
They say, it's, but, right, they, they say it's about two dollars a foot.
Those additional six thousand dollars.
It, it depends a lot on where the water lines are and, and all that kind of stuff, but, but they say it's about two dollars a foot.
This is Privet, and, no, I'm just thinking, you know, insurance rates are going to be higher for these homeowners if they're not sprinkled, um, and probably way lower if they are, so I don't, you know, you can weigh, weigh that too as far as money.
Right, a lot of companies do have a discount that they will, uh, allow if the building is sprinkled.
Okay, so, where are we?
Well, this, this is Commissioner Highsmith, I, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence now. I don't, I'm not sure how to approach it. It, to me, it's still a life safety issue, and, and, you know, the ethics of my profession are pretty clear on, on where I'm supposed to be on it as a commissioner. Um, there's, there's obviously a, a little bit of hesitation on my part now, um, but I don't know, you know, I'd, I'd look to the, again, to the wisdom of my peers to help, um, help chart the path here a little bit. I, it, it's a tough one, it's, it's going to be really tough for me to, to come to grips on, on how to vote on this one.
This, this is Commissioner Clare, I can tell you where I stand. If, if our city council has adopted a building code and amended it to remove the requirement to sprinkle residential, then they've made that decision, and I don't think it's on us to counter that. Um, if, if the fire department is pushing for better safety, which I am completely in agreement and support of, then they need to push council, and they need to push adopting the building code in its entirety, uh, without those, those amendments.
I think that is a baby in the bathwater argument for this reason. If, if the code required sprinklers, it would require sprinklers in every house in City of Oklahoma City. What's in front of us right now is whether we are going to permit, through the process of a preliminary plat, urban level density in an area where there is not, um, the infrastructure to provide fire safety, where we can't even meet rural response times. So, I mean, to me, that's, that's an apples and oranges argument. Yes, you can argue all day long about whether the city should or should not, um, you know, buck up against the development community hard enough to adopt a code that would require every single house built in City of Oklahoma City to be sprinkled, but it's awfully hard to make that argument about a house that's, you know, a block away from a fire station. Here, we're talking about a situation that exists, it's very clear, that there's not, uh, the ability to provide the level of fire safety that would support urban density. And what's in front of us is, is a yes or no on that question.
I, I unfortunately, this is Commissioner Cravens, have to view this differently. We've had three meetings, this issue has come up in two of them. I would point out that, although Mi- Mike Wilson indicated something differently, I have to take issue with, with the point that, there, there were, pointed out to us a number of other developments that are in some phase at this juncture, some of which are going to be preliminary plaques, some of which are going to be final plaques. They've previously been zoned for R1 under our code, which allows this type of development. So, all I'm, all I'm going to say about this, and then I'm finished, is how are we going to vote on final plaques that, where this issue has arisen? How are we going to vote on, because we're going to keep seeing these and we're, we're acting, um, on a matter of policy. So, I think we just need to be thoughtful about that before we make a decision about this, because this won't, this won't be the last one, uh, of these that we see. So, um, I, yeah, I'm, I'm done with that, so.
Yeah, I, this is Ace again, um, I, I think, you know, it's, I think I have to agree with Clare on this one, that, uh, although I disagree, I mean, if, if it's the position of our city council, um, to take, you know, the, the final responsibility on, on whether this is safe or not, it's, it's hard for me to overrule that, um, on a plat decision for this project. I, I mean, you, you, you obviously know how strongly I feel about it, or I wouldn't have brought this all up, but, I, just, just like at our state level, if, if we choose, um, you know, if the, if, if the elected officials choose to, uh, strike something and amend these ordinances, then that's what our state, and, you know, and in this case, our municipality go by. So, with that decision having been made at that level, I, I also don't feel, um, that it's my position to overrule that, although I might disagree with it, um, in, in principle.
I'll just see where we are. Uh, it's my word, I'll take the lead on it, and we'll see where we are at this point. So, um, as I recall-
But, but before you go, um, ha- have we worked through the other TEs? We've focused this entire time on this one.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to verify. My understanding from Jared when he read the application was that, uh, one, uh, four, six, seven, eight, and nine were all agreed to by the applicant. I have amended language for TE five. We're going to need a variance for TE three, which I have no objection to, given what Jared said, and, and I looked at the site, it makes perfect sense. Uh, and then TE two, which we just beat to death. Am I missing anything? Um, Jared or Mr. Rollins, since you're the applicant, is there anything that I got wrong in that review?
This is Steve Rollins. No, w- we're agreement with, with all of them except number two, and, and we need the variance on number three. That's correct.
And then I would, I would also add that, um, there, I believe there is a protester on the line, I didn't want to, want everybody to forget about that.
Oh, okay, well, I definitely want to hear from them.
I'm sorry, I do not have a, a notation that there's, uh, anyone else waiting, but before we take a motion in any event, I'll ask if anyone, uh, wants to be heard on this item.
You there? Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
We're, I guess we're the protesters.
Well, speak then.
We feel, we feel so insignificant now.
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Steve Collins at eighty-five hundred Northwest one hundred and sixty-fourth. We own the, uh, property adjacent to this development west. And, uh, we're concerned about water and mud once again. We've gone through these other phases where we were delivered a lot of water and mud we didn't want over our access road. So, what I have a, I, we don't have a plat of what they're actually doing. We have the preliminary thing that, I, I don't think it's anywhere close, and I didn't understand when they were talking, I think when Steve Rollins was talking, where the water's going.
When you talk about water, do you mean drainage?
Drainage water, yeah, rain, monsoons, and now I guess sprinkler head water.
Mr. Rollins, if you want to address the drainage issues?
Yeah, to Mr. Rollins.
Yes, this is Steve Rollins. Uh, we have been in contact with Mr. and Mrs. Collins since, uh, Council Ridge Phase Two. Um, as far as I am aware, we have always addressed any problems they, they have asked us to. They, they have had some, some water and some mud go across their access road, I believe that has been taken care of. Um, and again, to the best of my knowledge, everything has been taken care of as they've asked. We've met with them out on site, I've met with them myself. Uh, they have my number, I believe they have the developer project manager's number, and they're welcome to call anytime on any issues that they have. Um, in this phase, the storm water, there is, um, there is a creek very close to the property on our west boundary. There will be, most of the water goes to the northwest corner of the property, uh, where it exits. There's also a creek on the east side of the property that, that doesn't affect Mr. and Mrs. Collins, but that continues to go straight, uh, north across one hundred and sixty-fourth street. Uh, and then there is a, a small area of drainage that, uh, will go to the west, it's, it's at the southwest corner of the property. And that'll all be put into storm sewer.
Okay, uh, so you're coming across me with the water, right?
This is Mr. Collins speaking?
Yeah.
This is Steve Rollins, yes, sir. So, at, at our southwest corner, there will be some storm sewer going west towards you, and at our northwest corner, uh, there will be, uh, some storm sewer going into the right of way of one hundred and sixty-fourth.
Northwest, okay, so that's basically in that low area where my road is, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how are you going to do that? I mean, the mud is almost up to the road, and I can't take any more mud on that.
We would be happy to take a look at that, if, if there's been any mud that's washed down on you, uh, the contractor should have cleaned that up, and, and we will, we'll touch you again to-
Yeah, well, we talked about that, and we had some people out here, but the mud fences are down on your, uh, what is that, the Phase Two, and you washed out part of my road, there, and every time I do, you come in and you dig trenches, which somebody just did this last month, they keep digging trenches, and they tear down the mud fences and they don't put them back up. I don't know who this is, but I think you buried some electrical lines, and that's what it's all about, but, yeah, we have to address that for that phase. So, anyway, I guess it's going to be a mess for us, this is our only access for, you know, uh, emergency vehicles, fire people or whatever-
Just getting out of here.
And just getting out, I mean, you're, you're adding to the, the problem with the speed that you're delivering the water. This is not, you know, things that have, get absorbed, I mean, this is going to be fast water that's coming through here. So, I mean, to me, that's not addressed, and, uh, we have to look at that area. Also, there's going to be a dispute where, I guess, the property line is. You know that that fence line comes through, and it's sort of, it is not in a straight line, uh, so what, how much of that is coming in, and how close is it to the road anymore?
I'm not at all sure that, go ahead.
I need to look at that, I, we need to sit there and look at that and decide what to do. Also, I think that you, uh, is this the same developer as did one and two and so forth, three?
Yes, sir, same developer. And I will put you in touch with Mr. Collins and, and have him get, get with you to take care of, of any erosion control-
There's another thing I would like, is for you guys to give me a road easement north of that area that's low lying and is going to be flooded and everything else, to get in and out of here for, like I said, the vehicles, a fire department, uh, uh, any, you know, the, uh, ambulance or whatever, uh, and that would have to be south of that area where it's high and I can get in and out, and they can get in and out.
I think probably we're getting beyond the purview of our, uh, requirements here today. I would really recommend that you all meet separately, privately, and that you involve the city, uh, public works people in your discussions about the drainage and so on. Uh, if there are issues about access to the property, they may be able to help with that, I'm not sure, so, um, Mr. Collins, I appreciate you coming to speak to us today.
Well, we learned about sprinklers, that was interesting. So, anyway.
Well, thank you for listening to us. Well, we appreciate your input.
All right, Steve, you give me a call.
Okay, do you have my number? Let me give it to you.
All right.
It is five zero nine, zero two, one, two.
All right, thank you, and-
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, Commissioner Powers, that wants to be heard on this item?
Let's ask, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? It doesn't appear to be.
All right, with that, um, I will make, uh, a motion to recommend, or I'm sorry, to approve TE seventy-one fifty-two, uh, subject to the technical valuations, deleting TE number two. Actually, I'm sorry, I need to do the variance first, so I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the variance, um, to see seventy-one fifty-two, uh, amending section five point three, point one D five of the subdivision regulations.
Clare, second.
Commissioner Clare?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee? Mr. Coffee, are you there? You may want to unmute your phone.
She might be taking a nap.
Commissioner Coffee, are you with us?
Okay. Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Commissioner Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
And then I will, um, make a motion to approve C seventy-one fifty-two, subject to the technical valuations, deleting TE number two, and amending TE number five to read as follows. Preliminary plat should be amended to contain at least one of the connections across the creek on the east side of the site, a connection to the future north-south collector street. creek on the east side of the site, a connection to the future north-south collector's street.
Claire, second.
Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffee? Still not there. Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Ha- Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Okay, item forty-three is PUD seventeen forty-six, and that's an application to rezone five hundred northwest, one seventy-eighth street from R one to PUD seventeen forty-six.
Hey, this is JJ, this is an application for single-family development on five thousand square foot lots, um, consistent with the area and what's around it. We have two tech- we recommend approval with two technical evaluations. TE one suggests moving a hundred, uh, the access drive further west to line up with the drive across the street. Um, we can delete that TE because it just can't be accomplished, uh, that doesn't own the property to the west. The primary issue with this application is that the entrance on one hundred and seventy-eighth cannot meet site distance. The subdivision regulations can be satisfied without that connection, however, the applicant wants to keep that connection. Um, to further complicate things, we have, um, protests from surrounding subdivisions that, uh, do not want the connections to the west and south through the other additions. So, the applicant is online and available to answer questions.
Yeah, this is, uh, David Box, uh, once again. Um, so, you may recall, this item was actually on the docket the last time, uh, that we were able to meet in person. Um, at the time of that hearing, we had a protester, uh, that showed up, Mr. Neal, I assume he's on the line. We were not aware that there was protest until that time, um, so we continued the item, we went and we were able to have a, um, a conference call with Mr. Neal, my client, and, um, the only issue that he raised, and I think his letter will support this, is that Mr. Neal and some of his neighbors who live in the neighborhood immediately south do not want that connection. Um, and so, I'm gonna briefly focus on that. If you look at the aerial that is included in your, um, your packet, you'll see Valley Crest Trail. Uh, Valley Crest Trail is a public street immediately south of us, and when that plat was, uh, developed, that, um, developer provided a stub to the north. Um, what we seek to do is to connect to that street. Um, we explained to Mr. Neal that, you know, the issue is, if we decided to not connect that street, uh, we'd likely face a challenge from you, the planning commission. Uh, it would violate all the policies that you have enacted to require connectivity. Um, if you look at the aerial, I would submit to you that connecting that street will not increase traffic, uh, in their neighborhood. Rather, I think what is more likely to happen is the traffic from that neighborhood is gonna travel through our neighborhood to one seventy-eight. If you look at the kind of curved nature of that plat to our south, it is inconceivable to me that somebody residing in our plat would want to take that curvy street to get to one sixty-fourth. Uh, so, we will provide connections to the south, to the west, and one seventy-eight. As JJ said, one, connected to one seventy-eight, it is a legal and physical impossibility to align that drive. We're slightly off of that. Um, we can do two things that will help, um, ease our site distance. We will be knocking down, um, a portion of the hill that exists, um, to help sightlines, and in addition, we can elevate, uh, the drive to, again, increase the site distance. So, we think with those two things, that we're in a position to not create a safety issue, uh, and so that's why we have to delete TE one. I think JJ said they're fine with that. And then finally, TE two, uh, we do agree to, but the only protest issue I'm aware of is the neighbors' desire for us to not to connect. I believe it was Commissioner Highsmith at the time of the hearing, um, some four weeks ago, um, that told Mr. Neal, you know, "We appreciate your position, but just understand that if you come back asking not to connect, you're probably gonna be met with some resistance from the planning commission." So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is Commissioner Claire. Mr. Box, would you, regarding the site distance, another, uh, another potential solution would be to limit left turns onto Northwest one hundred and seventy-eight? Would you guys consider, would your applicant consider a right-in, right-out at that entrance?
So Dean Colita, who is the civil engineer for this project, is also on the line. I would defer to him, um, but I think I'd be concerned about limiting, uh, movements there, but Dean, are you on the line?
Yes, this is Dean Colita. Yeah, I'm not sure if that would actually fix the issue if it wasn't turn right only, um, 'cause I think the site distance issue is to the west, so looking that way, they're trying to turn out to the right. I think that's, either way, it's the site distance issue. I'm not sure if right-in, right-out would fix that problem, uh, but we did, uh, basically, uh, throw out there to put in a warning sign and flashers that warns of an intersection coming up, that has been done on several other developments in the area, and so we thought that would help, um, you know, warn people of the intersection coming up to help with the, uh-
I actually think that I would, uh, prefer that to the idea of a turn limitation, frankly.
This is David Box, I think we lost Dean. What Dean was saying is, um, we have agreed to install those, um, that signage and flashing lights that you see in other places that would allow for the traveling public to be notified, uh, that an intersection was, um, you know, or they are approaching an intersection. So, that coupled with the knocking down of the hill, coupled with the, uh, elevation of the drive, I think, uh, gets past the safety issue.
When you say knocking down the hill, do you have some, uh, information for us about what that decrease would actually be, and how it would impact the sightlines?
Yes, this is Dean Colita. There's retaining wall- Yeah, this, sorry, there's an existing retaining wall that's adjacent on the south side of one seventy-eighth, so we would take down the retaining wall as much to basically be at grade with the sidewalk, and then lower the grade to, uh, reduce the, any blockage of visibility through there. It's about a four-foot-high wall right now.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Claire, so you're doing that off of your parcel?
We'll be doing it-
You're doing that to the west of the street?
We will have, um, I guess Jack on the phone, I'm not sure if Jack's on here. We're gonna basically do it right, basically where our entrance is at, 'cause we'll have that site, uh, we'll have that site triangle there that we'll have. So, we'll do, we'll do what we can on our property there. Um, if we need to work with a neighbor, I guess we could try, but it's pretty difficult to work with.
Oh, this is Commissioner Claire, you know, it just looks like you're, basically, the west edge of your drive is on the property line, so it doesn't look like you have a whole lot of room to do that, unless you're gonna get some kind of, uh, construction, temporary construction easement, and have permission from that owner to do the earthwork on their site.
Yeah, we're required to put a driveway in for him, 'cause he's accessing his property through our property, so that would be accomplished during that time. Or, you know, we could potentially slide the road over slightly to get a little bit more room to work through there.
Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Pennington, did you have anything you wanted to tell us about this? Hello?
Sorry, I'm multitasking. Could you say it again, Janice?
I was just asking if Commissioner Pennington had anything he wanted to tell us about this case?
No additions from me.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this matter?
Yes, ma'am, uh, this is Brian Neal at five twenty-nine Northwest one hundred and seventy-fourth Street.
I can barely hear you, Mr. Neal.
Okay, uh, again, Brian Neal, uh, residing at, uh, five twenty-nine Northwest one hundred and seventy-fourth Street in Edmond, Oklahoma, seven three zero one two. I had filed the, uh, letter in protest, and also drafted, uh, petition for, uh, homeowners and residents in the subdivision. You have a petition there with some twenty signatures, and, uh, the concern was, and I still think it's a valid concern, um, with respect to Mr. Box, um, there may, I'm certain there would be traffic back and forth, uh, on, uh, Valley Crest Trail, both, uh, north and to the south, but right now, this, uh, the, uh, Valley subdivision, where I reside on one hundred and seventy-fourth Street, uh, it's a quiet area, uh, we were in the eighth edition of the subdivision, uh, we've been here fourteen and a half years, and, uh, the people-
I can barely hear you, Mr. Neal.
Well, I'm speaking as loud as a-
I hear him fine.
I think I can.
Are you, are you walking as you, uh, you're very strong sometimes, and then you sort of fade away?
Okay, well, I'll try to speak more directly into the microphone. Is that helping?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Um, anyway, the, uh, uh, this area, there's a number of children, uh, in this area, uh, the traffic pattern's been established for some time, it's a very stable area. Uh, again, we've been here fourteen and a half years, and people in the subdivision are accustomed to the access points they have from Western, uh, access to, uh, uh, Fifteenth Street, uh, which would be one hundred and sixty-fourth in Oklahoma City, and, uh, people readily signed the petition. It only took us a couple of hours to get the signatures that we did get. Uh, there's a, and by having the crash gate to separate this subdivision from the proposed devi- uh, uh, development, um, it would allow emergency vehicles to access the site, but the concern is, one hundred and seventy-eighth Street is a very, very busy street, high traffic, uh, and, uh, the, there would be, I think, a number of vehicles that would attempt to bypass the intersection at Western and one hundred and seventy-eighth, and look for an alternate route through a neighborhood, and, uh, by providing the crash gate, it would eliminate that possibility, but it would allow emergency vehicles to access, uh, either direction as, as the need arose. And we have an existing crash gate on Sleepy Hol- or, uh, uh, Sunny Hollow, pardon me, uh, just to the south, uh, access is one hundred and seventy-fourth Street inside the Valley subdivision, and that seems to have worked well, um, and, uh, when neighbors were contacted about possibility of crash gate, they, again, readily signed, and we're in agreement with that, and I understand there's certainly differences of opinion, um, but, um, the, uh, uh, limiting the access into the Valley from one hundred and seventy-eighth Street is extremely important to the residents that we've talked to in this neighborhood, and I would urge you to, uh, use the crash gate and to modify the technical, uh, evaluation number two, and to only require the internal connection to the west, uh, from existing streets and not from the south. And I'll answer questions, if any.
Do we have any questions? This is Ryan.
No, but, uh, this is Commissioner Highsmith. I do believe it would be helpful for, uh, the protesters in regard to the connectivity issue to hear from, uh, our planning director on why connectivity is important, or why we value it as a commission.
Yeah, sure, um, so, Plan OKC, uh, it talks, we've been talking about connectivity for many years now, uh, one of the reasons it's important, uh, not only for internal connectivity and for, you know, neighbors to be able to, uh, get to each other's houses easily and so forth, but if you're on the internal, uh, if you're inside a square mile and you have arterials all around you, um, it takes traffic off of the arterials to be able to get from one place to another within, uh, your square mile. If you, if you don't have that, then you have to have people go out onto the arterials, uh, just to, you know, just to get, uh, you know, a hundred feet or two hundred feet as the crow flies. So, it does, um, you know, these little decisions do make a big impact over time with increased traffic on the arterials and increased congestion overall. So, those are the, kind of, the main things, um, you know, of course, there's emergency services, and the more, the more access points they have to, uh, to a specific property, uh, the better able they are to get there, and they, they're always concerned about having multiple access points, because there are times when, due to a car accident, or a flood, or who knows what, um, certain accesses may be closed off, and there'll be a need to get out or get in through another point, so, those are kind of the basics as to why connectivity is important, uh, and that we, we try to get that, um, as much as possible with, with new development.
And, uh, this is Commissioner Highsmith again. I would add that, you know, it was a, it was a highly public, um, effort in the com- comprehensive plan, the recent comprehensive plan update, to, uh, establish the values of our community, and one of those, you know, values through that process was indeed connectivity. And obviously, as a commission, we review every case and try to understand its importance to, uh, the whole of the city, but generally, I think it's a rare occurrence that I disagree with that, um, you know, personally, me as, as just one commissioner, uh, it's rare that I disagree with the, the concepts that were stated in that document, and so, for me, I still, you know, to, in order to support this application, I need to see that connectivity. I understand your concerns, but I do believe, if it's completed with that connectivity, that you will find that your concerns, um, uh, you know, I don't wanna say unfounded, but I think you'll find that they're not, um, they're not what you thought they were. That, that's my personal opinion, um, it's also the principles that I use to vote by as a commissioner, so, to me, I'm going to continue to support it with the connectivity attached, uh, and that's, that's just, you know, letting you know as a citizen why I stand where I stand.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Hinkle, and I agree with Commissioner Highsmith.
I think, uh, Mr. Neal, we are not unsympathetic to your concerns. They are concerns that we often hear expressed, but I think, by and large, I don't wanna speak for, for, uh, out of turn, but I think by and large, you'll find that the commission is, um, committed to the, this concept of connectivity. It has proven itself to be, um, a valuable tool, uh, as we're trying to limit people's need to get out onto arterial streets, uh, in their automobiles in order to get from one place to another, uh, we find that the best way to accomplish that, and to accomplish also just sort of a unified sense of community, is, uh, to, um, adhere to these, uh, connectivity opportunities, so, um, I'm, it's hard to read the room when you're on the telephone, but I'm guessing that you're gonna find that the commission is pretty committed to this.
This is Brian Neal, and I understand that, but, um, I did contact, my wife and I contacted the neighbors, property owners, and residents, and, uh, no one that we contacted, uh, refused or said, "No, I'm not interested," or "I oppose that." They were all in agreement, and I felt obligated to, uh, bring that forward and bring it to your attention, and urge you to, uh, see a difference in this particular matter, and I understand that may not be what you, what you do, but I felt obligated, uh, on their behalf to bring this forward and, uh, continue to pursue it, which is what I've done.
And we appreciate that, uh, genuinely, I mean, and your, your willingness to engage and to participate in the process. It's very helpful for us to have that input.
Well, good.
Commissioners, let me ask first, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item?
I just have, uh, Commissioner Cravens, I just have one small issue, um, that I spoke to, um, David Box about, uh, on the facade regulations. I asked him if he would commit to- I asked him if he would commit to removing things like wood and stucco from the 70% requirement, and he was agreeable to that. I would like to see those changes made just to ensure the quality of the development.
Are you going to add that as a TE?
We can remove that from the 70% requirement.
I'm sorry, are we going to add that as a TE?
I think we can just amend the-
It's David's phone.
Yeah, I think we can just amend the MDS, Commissioner Powers.
Okay. Anyone else? This is Ward Seven, Commissioner Pennington, did you have anything for us?
Yep, a couple of things to say. I appreciate Mr. Neal sharing his concerns. I think it's already been very well stated by Commissioner Highsmith, the importance of the, and of Mr. Butler, about the importance of the connectivity, and I echo their sentiment. If it's any comfort, I think that even the layout of the, of the plat makes it very clear that it's most likely going to be local traffic. So I don't know that there's going to be a significant upturn in the number of people, you know, going between those neighborhoods. I don't know that that will be as problematic as you, as you think. And so I, saying all that to say, I'm in full support of the application. And if you have continuing concerns, Mr. Neal, I would encourage you to still feel free to reach out to Councilwoman Nice and make sure she's aware of, well, this is, yeah, this is the PUD. So I would encourage you to go ahead and reach out to her. With that being said, I move approval of item 43.
And this is David deleting TE1.
And deleting TE1, sorry.
Privet, second.
Commissioner Claire?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffee?
Aye.
Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
Commissioner Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Item, I believe we are on item 44. Am I notation correct here? Yes.
Yes.
47, or C 7126, preliminary plat of Hampton Heights. That's located, let's see, south of Northwest 178th Street and east of Northwestern Avenue with a variance request to table 5.1, section 5.3.2 of the subdivision regulations. And Jared will give us a brief summary.
This preliminary plat is associated with the last item. The plat includes 77 single-family residential lots and one common area on 15.514 acres, yielding a gross residential density of 4.96 dwelling units per acre. Staff has recommended approval of the application subject to the approval of the PUD and the eight technical evaluations. The applicant agrees with TE1 and TEs 4 through 8. The applicant has requested to delete TE2, as the site has been determined to meet the requirements for open space and recreational area. Staff has reevaluated the plat. We agree that it meets the requirements and agree that TE2 can be deleted. The applicant is requesting a variance to TE3 related to the site distance that we discussed earlier. That is in the subdivision regulations and would require a variance. The site distance requirement is currently 620 feet along 178th Street. The applicant and our traffic division would be able to speak to what they're, what they're currently able to meet regarding that distance. David Box and Dean Colita are both on the line to represent the item.
Once again, David Box, as Jared said, we, we agree with TE1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We believe TE2 can be deleted as we meet the open space requirement, and we need the variance, as we discussed in detail in the PUD, to the site distance. But we believe with the three things that we discussed, that being the knocking down of the hill, that being the flashing lights, and the elevation of the driveway, that we can satisfy those safety issues. So with those, we would ask for your approval.
You know, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable about the whole thing with the site distance. I mean, I, I just want to see it memorialized somewhere, what it is exactly that you're proposing to do, and what exactly it is that you think it will result in in terms of improvement of the site distance. Are you saying that if you do these things, you think you can meet the site distance requirements? Are you saying you think that you will have reduced the danger of not meeting the site distance requirements? What is it exactly that you're proposing to do, and what is it that you're, how, what is it, how is that going to result in a change? What is the change that it will result in, I guess, specifically?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, David Box again. So it doesn't remove the need for the variance. What it does is the variance is aimed, or the, the site distance is aimed at safety. We believe that even though we can't meet the site distance, the elements that we're going to put into play will ease those concerns. That being the flashing, the sign is with the flashing signal that you're approaching an intersection. Two, we will be knocking down, I think Dean said, about four feet, that retaining wall and hill that's there. And then three, elevating the driveway. So doing those three things puts it in a safe position. Dean, did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
And is that set out somewhere, David?
We could add that as a requirement to your approval.
Let's do that.
We're fine with that.
Would that-
I, I think that would alleviate my concern. My, my concern is just that it, you know, it is agreed to, but then somehow it's not memorialized, and later, everybody forgets, and-
Understood.
Okay.
We could, we could make that part of the approval.
Janice, could you, would you mind, now, do we need to make sure that that's, that's in the TE, or are we, what you just said?
I think it probably would be a good idea to, I mean, if we don't, I think that it would be a good idea to do them as TE, just so that we know that they're there.
David, you-
Is that agreeable to Mr. Box, or is there some other way you'd like to see that handled?
I'm happy with it, with them being TE. Dean, are you okay with that?
Yeah, you can put them as a TE.
Okay. Who had asked me that question?
This is Commissioner Pennington, could we, could, I just need the language.
So the TEs, I think, would be that, you go ahead, you go ahead, Mr. Box.
Yeah, so that the, the T, you could do one TE. The TE is that the developer shall be required to install a sign with flashing lights notifying the traveling public that they were approaching an intersection. Two, that the hill will be reduced by approximately four feet to help with site distance, and that finally, the drive off of 178th will be elevated in a manner to also help the site distance.
This is, this is Commissioner Claire, or can we be a little bit more specific? The signage is going to be placed on, to notify eastbound and westbound 178th traffic, correct?
I believe so. Dean, is that correct?
Yeah, just the eastbound traffic. That way, they know when they're coming to the east from the west, that there's an intersection coming, because that's where the site distance issue is, because of the hill there. So it would be the, the eastbound traffic. And we would place the sign based off the standards by the traffic division. There's a TCMUD, or basically a manual that states where you're supposed to place those based off the distance from the intersection, and so we'll follow those codes.
Right, and it's specific to speed as well?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this item? I thought perhaps Mr. Neal would want to speak again. If not, are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready. Commissioner Pennington here, and I believe we need to vote on the variance first. And I-
I didn't quite-
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you. Yes, we need a motion on the variance first.
Yes, the motion on the variance, so I move approval of variance to the section 5.3.2 of the subdivision regulations.
Claire, second.
Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee? Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now, I need a motion on the item.
I move approval of item 44, subject to the following changes in technical evaluations, deleting TE number two, and adding an additional TE with regard to flashing signal lights as read into the record. Is that sufficient, or do we have David read the whole statement all over again?
I, I think we've got that on the record, but you're welcome to try to repeat it if you wish to.
I think I'm good.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Privet, second.
Mr. Claire?
Aye.
Mr. Coffee? Mr. Privet?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Highsmith?
Aye.
Mr. Pennington?
Aye.
Mr. Cravens?
Aye.
And Chairman Powers?
Aye.
Thank you.
That is the last item, the rest have been continued to watch on.
Okay, so we have additional items. Does anybody have anything? Communications and report? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Claire, I just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge staff. This was, this was a new experience, and I know that they put a lot of work in to pull it off, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
Here, here.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Yes, we all, we all agree on that, I think. Let me go through Commissioner Communications and Reports, Planning Commission committees, of which there are non-Planning Commission members.
Commissioner Highsmith here, I would, as usual, have a report on how the zoning code update's going.
Sure. I can, you read my mind, I can go into that now, or any other commissioners have anything else? I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, nicely done for everybody, to get not only the tele, the teleworking or the video conference meeting done, but to do two meetings at once. But yeah, the, the development code, we're starting partially because of COVID-19. We've been delayed, we're, we're waiting for the, for the Stakeholder Advisory Team to be put together, but we couldn't wait any longer, so we've gone ahead and we're starting to move forward with the sign code. What we think we can do, we think that the sign code is able to be kind of packaged and done pretty much independently. And because it's such a, kind of, a hot issue lately, we've, we have various, as you all are well aware, for various reasons, it's, it's on people's minds, and there's some clarity that we lack to get taken care of. And there are best practices out there we'd like to review and all of that. So all that to say, we will, we are getting moving. We're, we'd like to do probably a couple of focus groups. What that will include, obviously, industry participants, but we're, we're getting together a list of folks, developers, and others who would be interested in, in kind of the more nitty-gritty. Sign industry typically, and what we heard with our, when we met with them previously during Phase One, is they're mostly just interested in the process, the permitting. So we also want to hear from those who are interested in things like the signage and the spacing and the distance, and the square footage and the heights and all of that. So what we would like to do is, is move along with that, so that when we do get the Stakeholder Advisory Team put together, we'll have something to move forward relatively quickly with them. So what we think is that we'll be able to associate any new, the new sign code with the current zoning districts, and that will be pretty easy to translate it at the end of the project to new zoning districts, whatever those might be. So that's how we have chosen to move forward, and since we don't have a Stakeholder Advisory Team quite yet, I need to get with the City Manager's Office and see where the mayor might be. Once, once COVID-19 hit, City Manager's Office, as you might imagine, is a pretty, has been pretty consumed with that, as has the mayor. So I will see if we can get the committee put together in relatively short order. If not, we might have to do, put something else together so that we can move forward with the commission's input and kind of have everybody on the same page. So that's, that's what we're able to do right now. And I'll, I'll report back as we, if we get that Stakeholder Advisory Team put together soon, I'll, of course, report back. That's, that's critical. We want to be able to, to have them on board and get started in the right way.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Are any other questions? Like, is there anything else?
So-
Commissioner-
Planning Commission members is where we are. Does anybody else have anything they want to ask or tell?
Yes, Commissioner Hinkle, I'd like to be very involved in the sign code portion of that.
I thought, I thought you might.
I was involved in the focus group, and it went rather well. Both sides of the industry were represented well, and just, I think Commissioner Privet can echo, up until bed and breakfast became the hot topic of Board of Adjustments, there were multiple, multiple, one right after the other, sign variances being requested because of the-
Oh, there still is.
-inattegrity of the sign. There's, there could be a lot of improvement. So just putting that on record, thank you.
Okay, yeah, and if, if you or any of you have suggestions as to who you think would be interested, certainly let me know.
Sarah Welsh has done a really good job at working with the different entities of the sign businesses in Oklahoma City, so I think as long as she continues to do what she's done in the past, it's going to work out well.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Highsmith here. While I, while I think it's obviously important to keep people in the industry as part of that team, I think it's also obviously critical to get some members of the general public on that to, you know, to basically be that countervailing force.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and we, we, we do need to determine how exactly, so with, with Plan OKC, we got some of that. We did a lot of work on, you know, what people think is appropriate from an aesthetic point of view, which is where the, the policy that's come, that's surfaced, resurfaced and come up a lot recently came from, which is that, generally speaking, people, people would like to have greater attention paid to aesthetics along our corridors and so forth. And so we, we feel like we have good direction as far as that goes. Um, and so we, we feel like we have good direction as far as that goes, but, but yeah, you're right, you know, is there a way we could kind of convene some kind of, kind of general public, so to speak, uh, to, to take a look at the, the new standards that we come up with and see if they're, uh, if they're appropriate? Like I said, generally, in my experience in past work on past sign ordinances for another city, um, the industry, the sign industry itself didn't really care a lot, frankly, about the sizes or, or anything like that, because no matter what, they're still selling signs. Uh, it's really, it's the general public and it's the, the, the commercial real estate owners and developers, business owners. Uh, so, yeah, we definitely want to get, hear from all those groups.
Anyone else?
Commissioner Privet, uh, I've got an interest in the council updates, is it, all this pushed that back or moved it forward or changed it anyway? Plans for that?
I'm sorry, what is it you're asking about?
The, the chamber updates that we talked about, and they were going to be this summer, I was just curious if it, if all this has affected that or not, or changed or thinking or...
...of the chamber quarters?
Yeah, the technology and, you know, new screens, all that stuff.
Oh, as, as far as I know, that is still, that's still happening. Um, but, you know, of course, that naturally could be subject to delays, um, but...
Right.
And we, as, last I heard, that was still on schedule, that could change any day, though.
Okay, was curious. Thanks.
And I, I will say, uh, since you brought that up, that it would be a good opportunity for us to move, uh, to a, a, a digital, uh, so I, I guess, we can talk more about that, but, uh, it will be less necessary to produce, uh, paper packets and all of that. It should be a whole lot easier for you all to do.